Hillsborough School District 1J work session is now in order. First agenda item is to have a budget development update with Michelle. And I think the budget committee is being admitted to the Zoom room. Is that right?
Yes, Kira?
Yeah, I'll hear it's okay or I can't see any of it. But hopefully it's probably fine. Yeah, what?
Hey Watson, who is online? Christine is online. Uh, sorry, it'll be just a second for me to get back on. Michelle will be back in a moment, I believe, for sure. All right, well, welcome. And thanks, everybody, for bringing another budget development update. This is the second and final one before we propose it in April. So I wanted to let the board know we do still have two vacancies on the committee. And so if you could look at your Rolodex or your phone contacts or people that you talk to and think about maybe encouraging them to join us, that would be great. Um, it's not too late. We're going to have just like a rolling opening for applicants. So they're welcome to reach out to me directly. Our current budget committee members are Dustin Rose, Darmina Khan, Christina Adams-Wonberg, Ian King, and Kim Stelch. Special thanks to them. Go ahead in advance. All right, so this should look pretty familiar to you guys. This is very similar to what we did last year, looking at our, uh, the assumptions we make around revenue expenditures. Um, again, kind of talking about the impact of projected enrollment. And mentioning here our student investment account and the strategic plan. Our capital project coordination is a little bit different because of, uh, kind of the expiration of our bond or exhaustion of our bonds. Our next steps in terms of proposing the budget. No, okay, wait. There we go. Super fast. All right, so we'll just dig into the assumptions. So thankfully, we are headed into the second year of a biennial budget from the state of Oregon. So what that does for us is it really provides us some stability. And we're not waiting until June 30th, maybe July, to figure out how much funding we have to work with in the year. There's not, you're not going to see a big like contingency chart in here necessarily like I would, like I provided last year. Know what we're going to have. Um, we are going to have an overall reduction linked to truing up. And so what that means when we are having less student enrollment, then we get less funds from the state for operating. So that's something that we're looking for. Uh, for ESAR and ARPA and our other temporary grant sources, we had a nice three-year plan for using the ESAR, ARPA funds for supporting our schools and using those funds for temporary supplemental services, things that we knew we were going to kind of have to have a plan for those as well. Then our continuation of major grants. So all of our federal program grants, we assume are going to continue at the same rate. So that would be IDE RA, all of the titles, um, are going to continue. Student investment account, high school success. Our revenue forecasts have been fairly stable and positive. So we're going to assume that those are going to carry on at the same rate. They are, every single one of those are driven by student enrollment and height. So that is something that we're watching carefully. Think again, our capital projects, we're really waning on those bond funds. We have a limited amount to provide some support for, uh, probably major maintenance items or purchases of houses. But we're trying to like stretch those out as much as we can. All right, Kira. These are the expenditure assumptions. Um, again, they're pretty typical. I know that, um, you know, when you read the news, you see things fluctuate a lot more than what I have here. Um, really because this is based on a multi-year trend. We try to just like project out, smooth that, those costs out a little bit. So of course, our collective bargaining agreements, these are the assumptions that I'm making, um, based on and for those agreements. And so if they vary very much from that, we're going to have to find other places in the budget to make reductions or make up for that difference. Um, we're assuming that all other payroll costs remain the same. Okay, for 2425, I believe that to be true. I think as we look beyond that, we are already anticipating a one and a half percent increase to PERS due to market returns on, in the current biennium. Our contract services, we have a four and a half percent, which is pretty much stable all the way down as you look at our consumable and non-consumable supplies. Um, consumable are used within the year. Non-consumable go beyond that, but don't qualify. And then we maintain our 4% general fund balance target. It's not a policy, but that is our target for the fund balance. And then we kind of added that bullet at the bottom to make sure that you guys have assurance that we're monitoring our expenditures through the year based against the projections that we made as we built our budget and kind of monitoring and managing that as the year progresses. Questions about these assumption slides? I'm speeding along. All right, so these are our preliminary 2425 enrollment projections. They are based on an older report by Davis Demographics. And I'm hoping for an updated report in the first part of March. But you can see here that we do see a pretty general decline. This, um, chart is better than the last report that we had right on the heels of the pandemic. So we are seeing a little bit of an upward trend, even though it's still a gradual decline out to 2029. Yeah, 2029, 1,100 students. Watching that and doing what we can to get students and keep students in our district.
The biggest change in the line is that grade seven, eight students are already sort of in the system. We dealt with that as much projection as kind of like we're at.
Yeah, I mean, overall, I mean, we've, we've kind of talked about this a little bit deeper as kind of brought forward the October enrollment report and trends with birth rates and our, um, kind of the inflow of students isn't coming as quickly as we had originally projected back in probably 14, 15. So, um, but we are seeing a slow change. So I'm hoping with this next report, it'll be much more flat, especially in those out years.
Up in kinders, not that really down.
I see kinder numbers staying fairly consistent. And then I see slight decline in the middle school. But then, and then there's a slight decline for nine to 12. And I'm just wondering, I guess I'm trying to figure out how we get from knowing that the kinder numbers are going to stay as consistent and then projecting that over 10 years before they hit the high school. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, it feels like I can provide the report because it gets really granular in terms of each year what's going up and a percentage of how many births are entering kindergarten. And that's what creates that one, that line. But the rest is just moving up and given the current mobility rate between schools at each grade level. So it really is a very robust report. Um, and I'd like to present to you a final draft of the one I'm waiting to get in March. So there will be more information. We are watching it very closely.
South Hillsboro not filling up with families as much as what it did, I think, right? One bigger factors?
I think probably the price point of those homes. Starting out to access that, but to be determined. I know that the city is working on some more affordable options.
Seeing this, reading that chart, I, I thought I was paying attention when we had our update last on, I didn't realize that the seven, eight was so much a larger percentage decline than the high schools. So you said there's going to be another report coming out soon that you'll send to us?
Yeah, there's a whole, it's called the Davis Demographics report. And it's, it's pretty amazing. I guess it's got a heat map. You can see all kinds of really good information. They also show the move in by grade level for each feeder. Um, that'll be great information for you guys to have. I apologize for not having it. It's coming. All right, so the student enrollment trends, again, you know, it's important for us to enroll and retain students for state school fund dollars. So those are weighted by student demographics. So that's our general fund or operating budget. Um, we are currently declining, talking more about the birth rates and kindergarten entries. It's like, I want to say 59, 60% of those students are ending first grade. It's not compulsory, I mean, at kindergarten, it's not compulsory at kindergarten. But that's a number that this company uses as far as projection. One of the things that we do in Hillsborough, and it comes back to that truing up, uh, my air quotations that I used earlier. But whenever we are projecting, HR and the business office work together to make sure that when we're projecting our enrollment, that we don't staff at the same level. We adjust that staffing based on where we see those kids being next year. So usually that means less kids, less staff. We achieve that reduction very carefully through attrition at the end of the year. So it doesn't result in, um, a reduction force or anything like that. So that's kind of been the trend for the last couple of years. Yep, more to come on enrollment as I get that report. Thank you, Kira. This is slide two. Um, it talks about that waiting. This is just for your, I'm not going to read it to you, but it, I answered any questions you might have about it. It, um, kind of talks about the types of students that we have and how we receive additional resources to support them. This is a revenue formula. It's what the state uses to calculate how much we receive. It's not an expenditure formula necessarily, even though we do really target extra supports to students that require them. It's not a straight across equation. And there is, again, a list of grants that are impacted by the number of students we have, the type of students we have, the age of student we have. For example, high school success, 85% of it has to be spent on nine, 12. It leaves 15% that you can target towards the eighth grade. But we have a whole plan that's separate that's developed by our, um, a team with Brooke and the Integrated Guidance. So something to watch for there. And our, and so we also understand that the amount that we get to access through the ESD is also driven by enrollment. All right, I just wanted to touch on the student investment account. We're going to have more details for you guys as we bring our quarterly reports forward. Um, but this is a reminder about how we have moved away from illustrating the current service level items that were being supported and the additional items. Right now, it's just the student investment account. So it's all combined together. Um, this is what we see in terms of our revenue for next year and how it's broken up. So, Neek, thank you for your question. It is really, really tiny on there. Um, the color coding is going to matter as we move on to the next couple of slides as well. So we have, the red is extended instructional time. We have green for well-rounded learning, um, blue for class size and caseload reduction. And then, uh, the biggest jump, student health and, um, safety is yellow. So those are the categories prescribed by the grant that we need to focus on for those expenditures. And here you'll see them all listed out. And see, we have information will be shared with our union partners as well so that they can see how their membership is impacted by these investments. Lots of licensed staff. Uh, again, this is for your reference. I don't want to read it necessarily, but happy to answer any questions about it or connect you to the right person that can answer at a deeper level than I can. Sometimes I get a little, a little furry on the programming pieces. But for the most part, we've been working together for a long time on this plan. Um, and I'm thankful for that partnership in the district. So we can go ahead. Thank you, Kira. Student success coaches. Um, you can see we have counselors, social workers. Um, wellness is a big focus here, the wellness centers. We had some, um, non-title schools that wanted, so we were, we were able to staff them using these dollars. And then the group, yes?
From the prior slides, we're spending more on, wait, we're not, I'm not getting it. I thought that we would be spending a lot more. We're spending more on wellness than we are on counseling. We're spending more wellness, um, total, total.
The SIA money specifically.
Yeah, this is the SIA, excuse me, investment account.
The 17 million or so, 7.5 million.
Yeah, these are supplemental on top of our operating.
Okay, thank you.
So the, um, the green again is well-rounded learning. So those are some kind of, again, some extra things that we're doing for our staff and students to give them additional opportunities that they otherwise wouldn't have. And then our, um, our extended time is our investment into before and after school programs.
Other reason to break out that SIA spending is because it serves two purposes then. Because if you file this report, it'd be their SIA grant obligations and budget obligations, right?
Right. A connection opportunity. Also kind of you can see how it enhances our strategic plan. All of that work is happening together all the time. It's not just somebody at a desk writing a grant, doing that. So you can see how they're connected when, as we talk about our strategic plans here. All right, thank you, Kira. Um, some of the operational contingencies that I'm, I'm watching for and Jeff Jones over there is helping me watch for. Um, you know, current year, we are seeing the impact of some new legislation. So I've listed those out there. Um, no judgment at all, but they are having an impact to our system. Um, we have paid leave Oregon, which is really kind of opened the door to a lot of opportunities for paid leave that our staff haven't had before. It's paid for in part by the district and by employees. It's not a state-funded program. And then we have some changes to unemployment for our 10-month staff that as we are self-insured, we will likely be impacted by that, depending on how we, how we navigate that and support that. And then we have, um, any grant program changes that come up. You know, those are, some are sound setting, some are coming online. Making sure that the initiatives that we are funding with those are sustained or sound set. Bargaining outcomes, we're with both groups right now. We just talked about that earlier, looking at going into the first year of a three-year agreement. And really forecasting beyond 2425. And when we propose the budget, you'll see three years out. Um, and it's kind of a shotgun blast based on the assumptions we're making for revenue and expenditures. So all of that is impacted by enrollment. It's going to be different every single year based on the most current information that we're providing to you. Again, I put a note here about our PERS advisory increase of one and a half percent. For us in our operating budget, that's about a million and a half dollars that will go directly to PERS in 2527 or 2526. And again, in 2627, that nobody will see until they retire. So that's just a note that we make here and we plan for. All right, so these are the next steps. Um, Mr. Jones and I are working really hard to develop that document and work to form a message that we're going to bring to the full committee in April, on the 23rd, to be exact. Have a period of time before we have the actual budget hearing and adoption in June. That's kind of our typical cycle now, on what we shared with you on the, on the calendar when we develop the budget. And we'll implement it on the 3rd of July.
Hey, Michelle.
I'm sorry, Christine. Yeah, your hand's really small.
I'm, I'm just kind of curious, how much, and I know our, the paid leave Oregon stuff is, is fairly new, but how much are we seeing as an impact this year? Because I know, I know some of that comes from employees. I know there is a portion that comes from the employer. But how much are we kind of seeing for this year and then projected for next year?
Yeah, that's a really interesting question because it's, it's kind of multi-impact. We have that direct cost for us. It's, um, 6.63%, which doesn't sound like very much, but it does add to the bottom line.
That sounds a lot, yeah.
Yeah, in terms of what we're paying to the standard, which is our third-party provider for that program. Um, but I think one of the, the other impact of that is due to absenteeism. We've had twice as many staff this year accessing leave than we had last, this time last year. Um, and so, you know, providing the substitute staff or job sharing or whatever that we have to do to continue operations in school, that's kind of an indirect impact of paid leave Oregon that we're still trying to figure out.
Okay, so there's the, there's the cost basically of the, the program. And then on top of that, to basically have coverage essentially, so.
That's true. I'll know more after the end of this year.
Okay, well, I'm just, it's, it's a really interesting program. I mean, I think it's a good program, but it, it certainly is having different impacts on, on jurisdictions. So I was just kind of curious for the school district, what we were seeing, so.
Hey, Mrs. Travis, I just wanted to piggyback on what I was sharing. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Connor and Michelle and I met with the folks from the Employment Department who are administering the paid leave Oregon program. And we were sharing with them our data related to absenteeism. That was something that they didn't have a, a plan to track and, and report back to the legislature until January 2025. And we think we might have data at that time that would be useful to them. But a lot of school districts are using private providers to move that money to cover the cost of the program. And the state can only see in July the impact of that on other businesses in the state that don't use private providers. And so one of the reasons I think it's important to talk about this is that we give feedback quickly to our legislators about the impact of paid leave Oregon on education and our ability to staff classrooms, specialized programs, et cetera. Because we have data today that shows that it's had a huge impact on us financially. It's important for us to be able to talk about that.
Yeah, I definitely think that it's, it's been more than what it was originally thought it was going to be. So I, I do agree. I mean, I think that that is, is some vital information for our legislative members to know and be aware of and, and, you know, to try to address, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So just to make sure I'm following, when you say absenteeism, are you referring to people taking advantage of the paid family leave program?
Yes, did that not sound?
Oh, I'm used to absenteeism meaning without a good cause. But you're meaning this is just people taking advantage of the program.
Right, when they go into our system and they put in that they're absent. So, and they, they do that to trigger a sub or us using any type of leave as we're processing their payroll. So I do apologize, I didn't sound.
I just mean, there's not, when they're using, when they're accessing this program, um, there's not, you're not talking about something separate from that. You're talking about people who are accessing the program. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and here are some resources. They should be live links from the presentation that you have access to in your board folders. And, um, Jeff and I are here to answer any questions I have. And about this year's budget as well, so.
Other questions? All right, thank you. Process is underway. Our next agenda item is to welcome our partners with the Northwest Regional ESD. We have Dan Goldman here and former HSD board member, now current Northwest Regional ESD board member, Mark. Walk the line between using our first names and Director. All right, um, sorry. Uh, so welcome. And we have, uh, there's a lot of information in your packet about this as well. We have a presentation that you go, there we go.
Chair Watson and members of the board and staff here at, at Hillsborough School District. Um, please, if you're a Martinez, you know, who forgives you already, Chair Watson. But, uh, we do have a lot of information in the packet. And, uh, every year, um, at least for the last five years that I've been at the ESD, I've come and talked to the, talked to the board about the ESD. Um, and we intend not to put you even further behind on your schedule and really open it up more for questions. Before we do that, I want to turn the floor over to Adira, who is going to share and walk us through the first couple of slides. And then, and then I'll take it back.
Good evening, everyone. Um, part of mine was interested by everyone else. So, um, Chair Watson, Susan Ryman, board members, staff. It's nice to see everyone again. It's been a while. I think the last time I was there was last year. Um, so I'm honored to represent the Northwest Regional Education District tonight. I am one of nine board members on the ESD and I represent Hillsborough. So I'm in my second year. And in that time, I've gained a lot of insight into ESD operations. Before the ESD was kind of, you know, kind of knew a little bit what it is. So, um, more insight into that, the diversities of the students and families, the hurdles we face in providing the necessary services for our communities. When you see the ESD evolve and expand to cater to the requirements of our districts and community has been very enlightening and I'm grateful to contribute to the DSD. The Northwest Regional ESD represents 20 school districts across Columbia, Columbia and Washington Counties with over 100,000 students. We are the largest, most diverse ESD in the state. So the size and diversity affords our districts a larger economy of scale for services than any other ESD in Oregon. And you can, as you can see by the reference that's of the programs, our districts are. Okay. I don't know, I'm just feeling.
Yeah, you're good, you're good.
So today, we're, we are presenting the 202425 local service plan for your approval. By Oregon statute, all ESDs must develop a local service plan that is approved by ESD board members and two-thirds of the ESD component school board districts. So before bringing this plan to you, Superintendent Goldman, Superintendent Ryman and the superintendents of the other 19 districts that the ESD represents and their leadership teams design the services in this plan. The teams research and wrestle with the needs and priorities and then decide on the programs and staff needs to be offered. Again, this year, the 20th district superintendent unanimously approves this plan that is before we would leave. After the plan is approved by school districts, um, school districts will start making selections about which services they will purchase and participate in for the next school year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Goldman, who has a few slides and.
Thank you. I think we've got to push those slides forward a couple. Okay, this is great, perfect. Thank you so much. Um, yeah, I'm Dan Goldman, I'm the superintendent of the ESD. This is my fifth year at the ESD, but it still feels like it's like my first or second year at the ESD. The ESD is such a, a big organization. We are in so many different spaces. Like a good percentage, 25% of our staff are actually home visitors and they're primarily working with families in their homes in early childhood spaces. We also have a huge touch in the post-secondary world. And we do a lot of work with community colleges and getting kids dual credit or a connection with CTE programs and getting pathways going, especially in our rural communities where they don't have a lot of infrastructure and support for that kind of work. So we just do a ton of stuff and I'm always just like amazed. I, I learn something new every day. And, uh, so a little bit more, as I think you all know, um, I was a district superintendent for almost a decade before coming to the ESD. And before that, I was in Tiger 12 in school districts. So kind of like there are a kind of, but we did a lot better than you in most. Uh-huh, I did it. But, um, oh, you guys have really come a long way.
Did we have to vote on it?
We've always, actually, even when I, back when I was in Tiger, Mike Scott was, became, came from Tiger 12. And, um, we were always very. um, became, came from Tiger Twalton and, um, we were always very jealous of the work that you did in Hillsboro and think very highly, and I still do think very highly of the work you do here. Just wasn't as good as, no, I'm just kidding. I'll leave it alone at this point. All right, so, um, I do want to talk, like, there's a lot of, um, you know, the way the money works, et cetera, from the state, I think is an important part of the plan and understanding of what the ESD, like our financial relationship. But really, um, uh, what we're really passionate about are the programs and the things that we actually do in service to kids across the four counties. So there's, um, on page 36 in the main, in the main document that you will be asked to vote on later tonight, uh, page 36 is more of a, um, a cutout on the things that we're actually doing with Hillsboro. And it's a look back, of course, so it's 22, 23 data that's in, in there and then, you know, we're always kind of a year behind in terms of the reporting process. But this slide kind of shows, uh, summarizes some of those components. So you can see, uh, that we write a lot of grants and we brought a lot of money into our re, into the region. Um, a very specific one that we included here just so the, the board and others know like what it really means. So we were involved in getting a $300,000 BOLI Future Ready Oregon Grant here for Hillsboro, and you know, you guys have done a ton of work with BOLI and, uh, kind of a model for the state on how to actually navigate those systems. So, um, really great, but we're involved, uh, in a tangential way in that regard. Um, early learning is a big, uh, it's a big footprint for us. It's actually our largest single footprint of direct service is in the early learning space. So like I said, we have a lot of people in EI programs, so BERTA III, who are actually home visitors, uh, working directly with families. Uh, we also provide, um, ECSE, Early Childhood Special Education, which is really, uh, kids ages three, five, really four and five-year-olds, 3K, uh, for kids with disabilities. Um, and so you can see some data related to that on the screen. Um, we do some assessments in that arena for the district as well, um, and in our RE program specifically. You send a ton of kids to outdoor school and then nobody usually thinks of ESD when you think outdoor school, but that's what we do. We have six different outdoor school camps and serve, uh, literally hundreds of schools in our outdoor school, uh, program every year. Um, in our instruction program, uh, you all participate, this is one of the financial places where, uh, where we have a lot of interaction with Hillsboro and Beaverton, who are not full members of our core program, which I'll go over in a second. Um, but you all are involved in quite a few of our programs, um, specifically our nine Create Success Network, um, last year, and now you're also involved but doing some more work internally on that. Our attendance services, career and college readiness programs, uh, our early literacy uh, program support and a host of other, um, and other programs like Willamette Promise, our dual credit, uh, system for the, for the region as well. So a lot of, a lot of interaction on the instructional services side of the house. And then, of course, when people do think of ESD, you typically think of special education services in the K-12 environment. And that's really where we shine, especially in rural communities. And it's because we have such, as Yadira talks about, an economy of scale. Hillsboro, Beaverton, Tiger, large districts participating, districts like Napa, Banks, Gaston, we can actually have a portfolio of, of, of resources and then we're able to provide speech, language pathology services, occupational therapy services and other highly specialized programs that they otherwise would not be able to, to have for the kids who, who live in those communities. So that's like, uh, the primary way that people think about ESDs. It's the way I would talk about ESDs, primarily as a district superintendent as well. And so you, you can see here a couple of specialists that are actually in your district. So 32, and then we have Groner, which we, um, support. And you have a number of students who are in the Groner Death and Heart of Hearing Program that we, uh, that we run. Uh, and then the last piece, um, is we have the largest technology footprint in the state of Oregon, bar none, when it comes to regional tech. And so, uh, servers, network, wireless, fiber, you name it, things that I'm scared to talk about and, uh, um, you know, because I don't really know of that world. It's like the plumbing and the walls and you only know when it doesn't work. So we have a huge footprint there and Hillsboro does a lot of purchasing with us on specific uh, components of the technology system. Other districts, by function of how they are with us in the core program, which I'll talk about in a second, they get all that stuff by function of just being in the core program. Hillsboro does indeed all of the stuff because you can't do it on your own because of your scale and size, but you do purchase back, um, quite a number of systems from the ESD. Next slide, please. Okay, uh, and the next one. So, uh, in the plan, there's this, uh, now this, this dollar bill is becoming famous. We're going to have to change the graphic, uh, I think next year, um, because you've seen me talk about this quite, uh, quite a number of times. But this is generally, uh, about how the state school fund works with the ESD. The ESD is actually a taxing authority. So like I know I have a tax bill, my property tax bill, and you'll see there's a tax for Hillsboro School District, um, and there's probably a tax for your bond. And you'll also see that there's a tax for the ESD. So we're a taxing authority, actually generate revenue for the education system. That goes all to the state, just like the taxes you generate here in the school district, um, and it gets reapportioned out in the form of the, uh, state school fund grant, um, which, uh, Michelle just talked quite a bit about. And so this dollar bill only represents that. Um, so I'll, before I get into this specifically, I'll mention that grants and aides and all the grants that now come out of the Department of Education is actually a much bigger portion of our budget than this. Um, and this used to be the whole kit and caboodle for ESDs, but now EI, ECSE, which is inclusive services, which is how we fund a lot of special education services. These are very large state grants and it makes up quite a, quite a big percentage of our budget. But this report and this action that the board needs to take is really only about the state school fund and a little bit about the Student Success Act. So, um, for most districts in the ESD, the way it works is 10% of the, uh, revenue generated uh, for, for, uh, the state school fund that comes, that comes back to ESD stays at the ESD for operations. And the other, uh, 75, uh, well, the other 90% of those funds go back out to serve school districts. For Hillsboro and Beaverton, it all goes back out. So it goes directly into your, uh, your agency account, I think you call it, or district account, and then you can purchase service back to the ESD, or you can just take it carte blanche and, and you do, uh, that and take it into your budget and you use it just part, as part of general operation, um, account. Uh, for other districts, they have that 25%, so 18 of our districts leave money behind and we cool it because they're smaller districts and that's how the co-op, we can actually, you know, afford all those services I talked about that, um, that really small districts can't simply afford without the ESD. So you all take it directly and then it's, it's about purchasing services back. So it's actually a really good deal, uh, for, um, for Hillsboro and Beaverton because you get full discretion over the funds. Next slide. This is just a little roadmap, I'm not going to go over it. Basically where we're at in space and time right now is a board approval. But if you fast forward, uh, or if you reverse, excuse me, and you go, uh, into the past, we really work on this all year round. And then November, superintendents, uh, vote on whether they will support this plan. And they have a lot of opportunity for input into the programs, what they need to see. And you'll see, if you're, uh, following, uh, in our plans over the years, you'll see a lot of changes and they all come from what's expressed by the districts and the district needs. Uh, and then it goes through a process of our board approving, uh, and then all the district boards approving. So Yadira asked me, how many, what number of presentation is this for you this year? And I said, this is number six. Not every district asks me, for me every year, um, but this is number six and I think I have six or seven more, uh, in the next couple of weeks. So we're on the road, um, with, with, with the school board and the state and the state. Bye. Uh, again, uh, the plan is in three kind of parts. For you all, you don't participate in the core, so it's really about what's available for purchase at the ESD that the board should really concern itself with. Here, it's all the menu of services and whether they are of value to the school, to the school district. Um, I hope they are because Travis approved the plan and I hope he, I hope he knows, but it, uh, it is all the menu of services that you should really be focused on. Then there is on page 23, the Student Success Act. It's now in, uh, now in statute, school boards must approve. We have a little, we have a technical assistance grant and we basically provide, uh, technical assistance on grant writing, the reporting connected to it, community engagement aspects of the grant, and then some, uh, technical assistance around some big ticket items that the districts say they want to get after. So for instance, one of those is, uh, instructional coaching. So we have an instructional coaching network, uh, that districts participate in from across the region. Here's all the data and this is the part that I do every year, I'm not going to do it with you all again, um, have this in your packet. I'm happy to take any questions that you have around how the money flows. But again, um, most of the things that you see here are about the districts who participate in the core program. You get the full 90% into your agency account and then we discuss how, uh, what services you would like to purchase. Oh, and then there's just a slide upon slide of all kinds of good stuff. This is, uh, these are slides on core services. Of course, Hillsboro doesn't participate, but you can purchase any of this stuff back and you do, um, some of those, like, uh, I think there was something in synergy there. We, we help you with synergy in some way, uh, not the full system. Next slide. Then you have all the service menus. These are all the things that you could purchase through the ESD and Hillsboro does, uh, purchase quite a few things, uh, from the ESD. And I think you can just skip through the next couple. They're just, these, these are all things that are in your, uh, in your packet, occupational therapist, speech pathologists, et cetera, and then. And here's, um, more specificity around the Student Success Act and the things that we, uh, do for districts, uh, regard technical assistance for that. And the last slide is questions and I'm happy to take any and, uh, Yadira, I'm sure is happy as well.
I just had a question because on the, um, Hillsboro profile, it includes a charter school. Do they also buy into services or are they separate than are?
So, um, district-sponsored, um, charter schools are part of the state school fund, right? Like basically all that money flows to the district and then you all figure out how, you know, there's a relationship there that districts have. Public charters are eligible to access our services by nature of the kind of fee-for-service model that we run here in Hillsboro. It's a fee-for-service model. Um, the one place where it's really doesn't work like that is in the Student Success Act Technical Assistance Grants or these other state contracts, uh, where we serve all kids and, uh, like we don't really care where they're at. So like early childhood special education, if you're in a private school or home, you're going to pay service from us. You know, that's what we do. Um, but charter schools' relationship on, is on a cost basis, um, for all these types of services.
Access outdoors. Remember them, so you put in with them, okay.
Special education.
Yeah, I didn't see, uh, a top-line summary of this, so is there anything of note different in this year, uh, services offerings or budgets compared to last year that I should know about?
So, thank you, yeah. Um, the things that we've added to the service array for this year, it's limited, um, you know, we don't scale up 100 new things. Uh, we do have, um, we are now providing college and career readiness software support to seven of our districts, all school links. Um, you all, we're using Aviance now?
We're still currently using Aviance, then we'll make a switch next year.
And, and there'll be a switch, so there'll be an opportunity for Hillsboro to evaluate whether that would be something that we'd want to do with the ESD or not. Um, that is the main one. I think we have additional attendance services, um, where we actually, uh, work in school districts and have like, uh, to help attendants teams dig deeper into attendance, uh, attendance problems, so to speak, and prevention services. On the budget side, um, over the course of this biennium, and Michelle's going to correct me, so I better, I better talk in vagaries, but we have about 11, 11 and a half percent increase in revenue that has come to the school district through the, uh, through the state school fund. Our costs have gone up too, um, and they have basically come in around the same number. So we do, we kept costs increases very low this, this year that we're sitting in, about two and a half percent was our cost increase, where most places were going up, um, like gangbusters or at least, at least 4%. And, uh, this next year, we have to course correct, else we're going to go in the hole. So our, our services will, especially on the personnel side, are going to go up about 8% next year. But in terms of the biennial picture, it's all within the same amount of resource that they are getting, so we should feel it in that way, but of course, it's a, it's a cost increase. Yeah. Uh, the last thing I'll say there is, um, right now in the legislature, uh, like I said, a big, uh, big footprint for us is early learning, especially in special education. And, uh, this last, uh, long session, not the one we're in right now, there was a, a real, uh, cut, like probably the, the only thing in the education enterprise that I saw that was cut in the state budget was services to disabled babies. Uh, and so, uh, some think it was an error, et cetera, they're trying to correct for it, um, this short session, but, uh, right now we see that there would be an increase of about $22 million statewide to that program. Um, in order for us to stay whole and to provide the same level of service in your community, um, we would need that number to be about $48 million. So we're going, we're planning right now a $5.5 million reduction in our early learning program. Um, so we are, uh, we are going to be doing a reduction in force and, uh, we will not be able to provide the same level of services in BERTA V that we were.
Fortunately, I appreciate knowing.
With the larger student population and most diverse, is that geographically diverse? Demographically, well, how are you measuring that?
Yeah, um, geographically diverse, but also racially diverse, um, so, and linguistically diverse. So we always kind of argue with moment, ESD on some of these. Um, but really when you look at true diversity and the number of different groups and languages spoken, uh, Washington County has, has just diversified like, like crazy, um, over the last 15 years and comparatively to Portland metro area. And so we are now the most racially and linguistically diverse ESD.
Mentioned that less reliance on state school fund and more reliance on gra, grants. Does that feel tenuous or make you nervous in any way?
Um, yeah, yes and no. Um, the state school fund is precarious, um, and, uh, I think state funding is precarious. It keeps me up at night all. Um, the thing about the state school fund is, uh, there is always a lot of energy around lobbying and advocacy for the state school fund. It's, it's the big behemoth in the state budget. Um, what makes me nervous is some of these niche programs don't have armies of people behind them. And so for example, the EI, ECSE, who even knows what those initials mean, right, in the legislature? And especially now that you have so many new legislators, that it got, got lost in the shuffle, the truncated long session with the walkout. People didn't know what, what it was and so there wasn't an army of people, um, that make it like you can't cut this and it got cut. Um, and so, uh, that makes me more nervous, right? It's that they're very high-impact grants for highly impacted student populations that don't have armies of people behind them, like the state school fund, uh, does. And so that's.
The reduction that you were just talking about in services to early childhood special education, um, this is the first I'm hearing about, so I, I could follow it more later, I don't want to talk to them, but just say a little bit more. Um, I noticed in the packet, it says that about 500 of our students and, or not our students yet, but our people living in our district, um, access those services, uh, through. And so, is that something that's funded by a grant program or is that one of the buyback services we do through our budget?
Yeah, the, the direct service is part of the grant, it's our responsibility. Um, assessment and actually, uh, finding kids eligible or not eligible for those services is the responsibility and statute of the school district. So you all contract with us for the assessment, for portions of the assessment, you do some of that. for portions of the assessment, you do some of that on your own, and then you contract with us for some of that. So that's the one place where money flows. But in terms of direct service to kids, home visiting, all the way to being in a preschool and having like an occupational therapist come into the preschool and work with a child, that's the responsibility of us through the grant. And what's going to occur with less money is kids will get less touch. They will still get services, it just won't be as robust.
Is it the case that all students who call by gift services just announce services that are distributed?
All of that conversation is separate from the local service plan conversation. I'm happy to answer questions if you have specific ones. I know like, you're advocating for more funding for DICE, right? So there's a coalition of folks who are advocating for that to be made whole in the legislature.
Nice conversation about the local, additional thought and advocating.
No, I see in the report that we're approving tonight that it lists how many of our, how many people in our area are receiving those services. So it was, I didn't realize it was so large, and I know how much it's touched people's lives in our area. So it was concerning to me when I heard that. So I appreciate the background information. Thank you.
For being here. This is action number one. I think they're agenda downstairs, right?
Can I say one thing?
Oh, sure, yeah.
It's not a question, but more of a comment of appreciation. As an early childhood, early childhood education provider, the services that you guys give out has been so beneficial to former students and current students. We had actually one of your speech pathologists come in today to help one of our preschool students. So, and a lot of them now are thriving in the Hillsborough school district, so I just want to say thank you for what you guys provide.
I had one shout out to that. I give Brooke and her team credit for getting Biz Town to come out of the West Side. And I give Dan and his team credit for figuring out how to reach Northwest Oregon to accessing Biz Town as it exists in Hillsborough. So thank you for all the work that went into that.
All you guys, we just, we just, we just ride your coattails.
And for your collaboration and your partnership.
There, I mean, there's classes from Tillamook coming to access there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to do that.
Pacific City. Pretty amazing.
I'm good, Brooke.
Yeah. Yadira.
Yadira.
And that's an update from the Human Resources Department. Oh, and they're moving
All going to stand up because we're going to let some blood flow through our legs and brains. Great, we're getting kids up here. We're super excited to present some information to you tonight on our workforce goals. And I'm really honored to be here with my team, three of our team members. And we're going to have them introduce themselves before we get started. And after they introduce themselves, then you can shimmy on down to your seat.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. Mataroli Escovia, HR Director for Classified Staff.
Good evening, Kim Behr, Talent Recruitment and Retention Toca.
And Brian Hudson, HR Director for Licensed Staff. Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much. All right, let's go and have a seat.
So everything that our goals are tonight are centered staff to our strategic plan. We are an extension of Pillar C, which has to focus on retaining and, and having exceptional staff that reflects our community and those systems that we put in place for staff development, and creating sustainable retention ways to have great staff in our system. And tonight, these are kind of our goals that we are hoping that you'll walk away with. And so I'm going to go ahead and kick it over to Brian for our next slide.
Our goal is to have a workforce that reflects our community. And this is a chart that shows that we are working towards that. We've made some pretty good gains the last few years, and particularly, the first column there shows the different categories of our staff. We actually have class, staff licensed staff, and then our administrators and super tech, and then the bottom column, students. And you can see there's kind of these snapshots of time, 2015, 2019, and then our current school year. I'd like to give a shout out to Kim, who was hired in 2019, and you can see that beginning in that year, we've had really great gains. She's worked very hard building partnerships within the school district and outside the school district with universities, trying to get pipelines going for our classified staff to become licensed, and for our students to become staff members. So at that time in 2019, we've gained 10% in classified and another 8% in licensed. Up until that point, it's been pretty incremental. So we're pretty happy with the last few years, but we have a long ways to go, obviously, if you're looking at the bottom column, and 61% of our, our students identify as diverse.
We just wanted to highlight some of the various pathways that we have. The first is for our students. It's now called the Diverse Educator Pathway, but formerly known as a Ruud Scholars. It was, we started in 2013 with a strong partnership with Western Oregon University. At this point, we have 11 heights of our alumni that have graduated and that we hired as, I believe, dual-language teachers, bilingual staff. And currently, we are in cohort nine, and we have 41 of our high school graduates that are on a pathway to become educators.
For classified, a pathway that we have is classified that want to become teachers. We have, remember Oregon State University, where we have, it was established in 2019, we have 10 classified that graduated, four are currently enrolled, and 11 have been hired.
And we are trying to also expand our partnerships. So last year, we started a partnership with the University of Portland and their nursing program. Currently, this year, we have nine of their nursing, we have eight of their nursing students that are with our nurses because they've got student teacher experience. And then this year, we've expanded it to have a partnership with Sumner College and their Licensed Practical Nurse. And then I'd like to transition to talk about a few of the licensed cohorts that we have for our teachers if they wanted to get an endorsement or add an endorsement to their license. We have a partnership with Western Oregon University and their special education endorsement, a very strong partnership with the University of Portland and their English speakers of other languages endorsement. We are going to start a physical education endorsement, and we have a great partnership with Lewis and Clark and their administrator program.
And for classified that don't want, just want to get a license, we have apprenticeship pathways, and we're currently working with a fiction engineer and maintenance engineering.
And then here's just a few other ways we try to support our staff. One is through tuition reimbursement. So for licensed staff, they are able to get six-quarter credits per year for the first six years they're employed, and then also able to borrow in a three-year increment. So I would be able to borrow from last year's, this year's, and next year's, so you can combine those to, to pay for your college courses.
And for classified, a set amount of money is set at the beginning of the year, and they can access $1,000 for tuition reimbursement. If they need more than that, and if funds are available by the end of the year, they can access $500 more.
And then just a few other small ones. We work with TSBC on their diversity reimbursement program. So this allows staff members to get reimbursed for small fees like licensure and fingerprinting, et cetera. And that can be reimbursed all the way back from 2020 to, to current day. And then diversity scholarships have been available since 2017, $12,000 a year per person.
I want to talk about a few of the grants that we are involved with. The first is Grow Your Own, which we've been involved for the past few years. There are two. One is with Portland Community College that's leading that, and we are partnering with other Washington County districts. And the second is where Oregon State University is leading it. We're also partnering with Clackamas ESD, and these are really focused on our classified staff that wants to become licensed educators. A new grant this year is through the Northwest Regional Educator Network, that is focusing on supporting our special education teachers with mentoring support. And also this year, a Meyer Foundation that's through the state. There's Oregon Justice for Black Lives, which is part of the overall grant that's really focusing on supporting our black community. And in partnership with North Clackamas School District and Clackamas ESD, we're focusing on how to best recruit and retain our classified staff that identify as black, African-American. And next slide. This summer, we've had some targeted social media presence, and this is to really kind of share our culture, show why folks should work for HSC, why they should stay in HSC. And so we have LinkedIn, Instagram, and TikTok to kind of target certain age groups. And I will say on, when this was submitted on Thursday, we released a reel of our elementary principals. That was, I think, at the time, when I looked today, had like 1,600 views, and now the total number of followers is well over 300. But really trying to showcase the culture and why someone should come work for Hillsborough. And so that's kind of the goal with that. Next slide.
Right. One of the last things we want to kind of end it up with is that we, last year started our HR High Five Podcast, and it's an opportunity for us each month to have a different theme. We've had, starting off the year well, or the power of relationships, and we've even interviewed Travis as a part of that process. And I think it's just been a way to kind of target and focus the great things that are happening in our district, and people can listen to that, similarly to Beth's podcast in their car, or they can watch things on the reels, you know, through TikTok and social media. But I really think it's just a way to showcase the amazing things that our staff is doing, and just to kind of get in and hear those stories. And what I want to say is special thanks to Hannah Schumacher and our HR supervisor, who writes the script for me, and then to Mike Cherry, who does all of the recording for us and the editing, and Kim, who organizes all of those meetings that we have with people, and who people feel nervous, but we just remind them they're not being recorded, except for audio, things like that. And so I think, I'm just really grateful to be a part of this work that we're doing, and that's innovative to really address those stories that we want to showcase about our district. And so payday and pod day, we've tried to keep that together. Let's go on to the last slide. So I want to take some time for reflections and questions. And we do have an eat, meet and greet opportunity tomorrow night for our dual-language program. And so we have a QR code there. So if you know anyone that's in a program that wants to come and learn about that, please join us tomorrow night. I want to say that this is not only HR doing the work. This is in collaboration with our OSB colleagues, in collaboration with our partners. And I just want to take a moment to thank Arseno Tovari. You can see her pictures up there, and from Jessica Sanapi and Brooke Nova, who all have done this work to help make this happen. And we just appreciate the partnerships and collaboration together. Have any questions for us?
I was kind of talking about, I know with that whole, just putting together our staff, and sometimes what I've seen happen in organizations, it stays at that entry level. So what are other ways or strategies that were, like, Grow Your Own, that, that's, that's?
I think we, Travis did a presentation for our PK 12 folks, and we talked about leadership opportunities, like future leaders, and our BILT program, and our executive leadership. And so those are some ways. And also, folks can move from a classified position into a super tech position, where they get some chance and opportunities in some of our departments to grow in that capacity. And so I think it's part of, is that podcast is telling those stories, so people are sharing, like, this is where I started, and this is where I've been growing. And so we'll be interviewing, like Carol Hatfield is an example. She started out as a bus driver. Now she's the Executive Director for Transportation. And so we have those stories for folks who started out, and even Martha started out, you know, as a bilingual assistant, and then she went into the classroom and then became a principal. And now she works in HR. And so I think there's a lot of those stories that are spread across our district, and we just want to make sure that those stories are shared.
Yeah, sometimes people don't know. They're like, why do you not go there, or do this?
You might give us some other ideas for our reels or something like that. We might be coming to you for some.
One of the things, Erica, that we've reinstituted is our BILT program, which is Building Instructional Leaders Together. And that is a program for our teachers that have been in the classroom and then are interested in like, kind of like a coaching position or a Toca position, which then opens kind of that door of like, maybe it's an administrative position after that. So it's something that we did pre-pandemic, and we just had our first cohort start, and we were very targeted, I think Connor mentioned it, but very targeted to make sure we had a, a great cross-section of our staff be part of that. Travis has also started our executive leadership, which is supporting to get folks in, up in roles at the district office. So all of those programs are programs that I also was purveyed to and was able to be supported in.
Such a cohort nine, and 40 students in cohort nines. Are those freshmen, I guess?
Freshmen.
Okay, so that's 40 are in the program currently.
And, and before it was for, you know, teachers in the classroom, but it expanded to counselors, you know.
And I know, having had a few majors myself in college, people's interests change. Do we have any sort of strategies for engaging people who may be in an education program, interested in working in Hillsborough, but didn't start out, so a Hillsborough student goes to Western, not thinking about being part of our program, they get to their junior year, and like, hey, that, you're getting support. I would love to, do we have ways for people to get in on that after the fact, or is it only from the outset?
We're always open to supporting any, especially our alumni or any folks that in our community that want to become educators, whether they are still in college or, you know, community members that are thinking, do I want to work for a district? Part of our role is to connect with them, find the right program that's meant for them, and the right pathway, and work with them.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that we don't expect every student who starts a lesson as a freshman to make a, stick with that path and join us in the district, but there may be some that want to join that path after the fact. I'd love to not miss out on those opportunities.
You know, with our diverse educator pathways, we have two amazing educator liaisons, Brendan and Brenda, that build fantastic relationships with all the students. And I know that, you know, if they hear about another student, they would gladly like call them, text them, you know, just connect with them. So I feel like we have a great network, but can always do more, do better.
I realize the time mark. I believe I'm the next one up. I will keep going on it.
Do we know if we have people awaiting us downstairs? Can we send a scout team?
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. I'm happy to be here and be in front of you to share just a part of what we are doing as the Equity Access and Engagement Team. This isn't all the work we're doing, but this is one that we really wanted to focus on to help ensure that everybody understands what we are doing. So if you go to the next slide, in HSC, we are committed to equity access and engagement, ensuring every student and their families have opportunities to succeed. And so through
And so through meaningful engagement and family connections, we're creating a supportive community where everyone plays an active role in our students' success. So if you look at this timeline, it starts off, not just the work that has been done before then. My partner, Mayday, and I worked together in year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. But when I started in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we put a five-year plan together. So in year one, if you remember, we went over foundations. In year two, we talked about connections and how to engage in discourse. In year three, we talked about sustainable integration of equity through our cell work. And now in this year four, we're in transformative cell and engaging our community. So for transformational cell, it includes, but is not limited to, the empowerment and elevation of all voices through our action in our H S D community. I'm going to share with you just a snapshot of how we are co-creating the transformational climate and culture through engaging with our families with. I'm going to anchor this first to the Castle Core Competencies. I think I've seen this show a couple of times. But the one thing I want you to look at is the visual. We've talked about the five competencies that go along with the most social emotional learning. But almost outer rings, community and family caregivers really come together to support this work. It's about belonging, it's about advocacy, it's about identity, it's about problem solving, and it's about helping our students to be curious as well as our families. So as we go through these slides today and look at a snapshot of some of the work we've been doing, I'm showing this to you because the two outer circles are what I really want you to be thinking about, is how we are engaging with our community and co-creating an equitable world. We're focused on it all that we do. So, first event I'm going to tell you about that we had, if you go to the next slide, took place just in the last couple of weeks. We had a couple of Black History Month events, well, several, but a couple that I was able to be a part of. The first one is our B S U's are getting strong, and our Black Student Unions put together a Black History Celebration. The students drove the entire assembly with the hope of, with the help of their facilitator, Mr. Keller. And they put together a thirty-minute presentation where everybody was engaged, there weren't people walking out. Everybody was enjoying themselves and really learning about Black history. The second event was our Black History Month Celebration last Thursday. And we had several students participating, we had families, we had over two hundred of our families show up for this event, and it was open to all. And so you saw a lot of diversity there. And one of the highlights was having the Anasib dancers were able to perform. We had Black vendors, local Black vendors, who were able to sell their merchandise. Our B S U's set up, three of them set up booths in the hallway and were able to sell bracelets. I was going to wear my bracelet, but I didn't wear it. And then we had Dr. Charlene Williams, who is the Director of Oregon Department of Education, who was the first Black woman in the history of Oregon to be named as the Director of O D. Came and did a presentation for us and just, it was, and we had student speakers. It was a wonderful event, and we'll continue to do it. And so that was a celebration of one of our events. If you go to the next slide. We also put together a thing called Saturday Family Academy. And if you remember from last year, we were doing monthly social emotional learning events for our families where they could come in. Well, this year, we decided to see if we could do it all on a Saturday. So we had several different people come in. We had Alana Timohedes, we had Golden Roads Arts, Play Fit Fun. And then we had people come in and talk about mental health, community care specialists, technology in the brain, social emotional learning one-on-one, our wellness programs. And we had families engage and really spend a Saturday morning having breakfast and learning how they can support their children at home. And then in January, we put together a student leadership team summit. And this student leadership summit was, each of our high schools identified anywhere from fifteen to twenty students that are leaders in their building, really looking at the diversity markers for students. So we had a wide range. This was a day that teachers had a workday, so the students technically have the day off. And these kids showed up on a day off to be inspired and to develop their leadership skills. So on that day, we had Travis did a speech, Erica Lopez did our closing, thank you very much. We had Alex Gang, who's a local known slam poet, who came in and got the kids all riled up. And then we had local community members like Gary Westling from the Native American Tribe, Nats Lopez, Loaro from Northwest Regional E S D. We even invited back our former Assistant Superintendent, Dale Spitzer. We had Audrey down there who did a session for us. So it was really great. The three things we focused on was defining your purpose, tone and voice of a leader, and the power of curiosity and leadership. And the kids loved it. It was, and we'll continue to do that and bring kids together so that they can build those leadership skills. The next one is a couple of A P I events, which Hadley has been so great. He came to the first one, which was our Native Hawaiian dancers from Pacific University that came and performed for us. And he brought a squad of his friends, and they ended up running all the arts and crafts. And so by the time the second one, we did a little hotline called Hadley and His Friends, and they all showed up for the second one and were able to do lanterns so that Audrey didn't get painted in paint, and Connor, they didn't get glitter all over from the lanterns. They were able, so we were able to partner with our students. We had students who were selling from our A P I groups, A A P I groups in our schools. They came and they sold merchandise to raise money for their funding. The dragon dancers that were there that day, that was their sixth performance, I think, of the day. They had been at Intel and Nike and a couple other places. But this group started off with four people in a Zoom room. It was me, Audrey, Kim, and Connor saying, I hope somebody comes to our meeting. But when we turned it into live community events where people come together, they don't want to leave, you don't have to jam pack the whole thing together. You just need to get it about, at about half an hour, and then they stay and they make community. We now, at this last event, had over a hundred families that joined us to really celebrate the history. We have one more event planned, four of them. And because of this, we had one family member, parent, who stood up and said, why don't we have a pack? And this is what we've been waiting for. We've been waiting for somebody to be able to stand up and say, we should have a pack. Now, if you guys don't know, just this week, the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Student Success Pack just passed through government. And so there'll be a guidance coming in within a hundred and eighty days that'll tell us what we need to do. So we got it. So I'm really proud of this. And because of it, we are now going to be able to start fostering that bridge with our cultural brokering with our Asian Pacific Islander community so that we can be representative of our students. And then we've had community inclusion forums. This has been hosted by our family engagement liaison, who is in special ed. They've had a few events this year. At this one, they were talking about trauma in the brain, and we had Dr. Rick Robinson that came in. So really trying to find all those identity markers and intersectionality of ongoing efforts to really help our schools and us to build that bridge with our families and our community. And then I'll go, oh, this was a family partnership. So instead of doing those monthly ones, now every theater does one a quarter. So this was a Liberty Theater. They were doing those cell nights in technology on the left two ones, where families showed up from that theater. We've done two so far. And then the other ones are a Black College Fair that we hosted here at Century High School for families, all families, but we were specifically targeting families that identify as Black. We've just started an L G B T Q two S I A Task Force. In this task force, we're celebrating all identities. We have a culturally specific after-school grant, which we're hoping to, which we will be having a student summit for students who identify under this identity marker. We have now a leadership team that consists of admin, certified, and classified. Ooh, certified, I dated myself, I should say like, sorry about that. And then this task force is really breaking up into three different groups where they're focused on foundations, connections, and support, much like we started when we started our equity work, in how they can elevate the voices in the families and the students who identify with the identity markers, L G B T Q two S I A. We don't forget our collaborative work that we're doing with our staff. This is different meetings that we have on a monthly basis. From our student success coaches, we do recess lead monthly meetings, to one tomorrow, where we're moving forward with playworks, it's an organized system of running your recesses. We also have restorative practices collaborative that is moving for our high schools. And we also have wellness meetings monthly with our wellness instructors at ten of our schools. As a school system, we also have monthly climate, culture, and voice meetings, where each school identifies an equity person and a climate and culture, and both of them attend a climate and culture and voice meetings, which are usually about eighty to ninety people on a monthly basis, where we go over how equity is infused and supports the social emotional learning. Great group of humans, but then they take it back to their building and are able to drive professional development and conversations in their building.
Thank you. You had to run through that like really, really fast.
Another topic we need to rush you to, because there's nobody waiting for us downstairs.
One of the things I just wanted to say, that I love seeing our spaces being utilized to build community, and the more that we can, I want, I like people to feel like this is their second home. Like school, they spend a lot of time in the school buildings. They feel comfortable there, they feel safe. And the more that we can allow those spaces to be used to create community, I think it naturally and organically will make our schools safer, will make parents feel more welcome, students feel more welcome in attendance. So I am like, how can we do more of that? And especially like inviting, I love hearing about, especially inviting their visitors there and participate and get to know them and be in the community. I just super, super happy about that. And how can we?
And I didn't get through a lot of the work. I think this would have been a seventy-five, five decades, if I included the work that we're doing with, you know, Latina, Latinx, O, Latinx community. We are doing so much with them. But I wanted to just highlight what we are focused on, that in addition to that, that hasn't really been established in the past, that we're just getting a couple of years under our belt with, but you all are aware of it when you're out in the community. Because I can go on, my partner, Ova, and I can go on and on about what we can do, what we are doing with our Latina, Latinx, O, Latinx community. I just want to focus on the newness of the community right now. I don't want to, forty percent of our students that are, identify underneath that identity marker. It was intentional to just show the newer self.
We're talking about this presentation, we're talking about how the school board, you all have expressed your desire to elevate student voice and engage families in our school buildings, and also just to what school is. And so this is perfect. Like, if you saw the calendar that Francesca and her team are on this year, it's like, and especially I think that, and everybody around here is participating in this, so I'm really proud of. The level of engagement and also the diversification of communities of people to come together in our school system is like I've never seen before. So thank you for that.
I like the round circle thing, it says authentic partnership. So here in like, you know, having Alana Timohedes come in, into the space, and we have the facilities to use them, like just, you know, and we have the trust and access of community. How can we merge that with our partnerships that we have? So I'm very happy to do that.
Thank you.
And I know, like, looking at the years too, it's like, remember when we were like asking for a position for, like Francesca? Now, here we are, so this makes me feel so good.
Michael's just happy he didn't get accident.
If I notice you didn't include any pictures of you dancing, so.
And walking key. Thank you very much for letting me have it.
Nice to have Dave. Jordan?
Just a couple reminders around our use of the microphones and different things in this room. The biggest important thing is to be up close to the table. And by the only time we have close to the table here is if people are standing and decide to step away from the table, and then you decide to speak, just make sure you come back up to the table to speak again so the mic can pick you up. Downstairs is where we're having sort of the most trouble is because you really need to be within like three inches of the mic for it to be able to pick you up. They're designed to pick up that close sound, and if you back away from it or have a conversation with somebody, wait for the mic to turn. So a lot of it is, some of you are pulling the mics up, but then when you go to speak, you turn to talk to somebody. And now the mic's over here, and you're talking this direction. And so it's really either putting the mic on the side of you, that you're going to be turning your head most often, if you sit on one side of the board seat or another, so that as you turn, you're actually turning into the mic, or make sure you adjust it and pull it in, you know? And that just helps us. Many times, it's when you're most passionate about a subject that sometimes you're backing away and sitting back in your chair, rather than being up on the mic so people can hear you. The room can hear you, it's the online. And then the biggest things are translators are not able to translate it even after the back, because your sound isn't on the recording. And our sign language, they're a very nice visual cue if you're speaking. If you look up on the screen, they're always on the screen now. If they stop signing, they can't hear you. And so, and you'll see them actually point to their ear to signal that they're not hearing anything. So those are some definitely visual cues. If you look up at the screen, showing that they can't hear what's going on there. So we can just think about that as we're speaking.
All right. Our work session is adjourned, and I will see y'all down.
We begin as we always do with the flag salute. For those of you in the room, the flag is at the back corner. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atholati Indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on, the Tu 'alatin Kalahuiya, Kthulamet, Clackamas, Tomwater, Malala, bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. And remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native First Peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over four hundred tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. Next up, our proclamations. And who's first? Patrick, I think you're up. Here we go.
Excellent. We got some instruction in our work session about how to use these microphones effectively, so we're glad to be putting that into practice. We believe in learning. I'll read a proclamation. In honor of Classified Employee Appreciation Week, the Board of Directors would like to thank the nearly one thousand five hundred employees who fill the critical roles, including educational assistants, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, maintenance technicians, custodians, office support staff, and many others for the Hillsborough School District. Classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, the safe transportation, the healthy nutrition, and the direct instruction of students. Their often unsung work behind the scenes, supportive teachers in delivering instruction, diverse talents, and tireless dedication to our community's students is invaluable. Your community contributions to the Hillsborough School District are valued and appreciated. Please join the Board in thanking our classified staff and recognizing them during Classified Employee Appreciation Week. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of March fourth through eighth, two thousand twenty-four, to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week. We urge all to join us in recognizing the contributions and achievements of classified employees to the development and prosperity of our employees to the development and prosperity of our Hillsborough School District community.
Hello, everyone. The Hillsborough School District celebrates women of every race, class, and background that have made historic contribution to the growth and strength of our community in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. The Hillsborough School District honors women that have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life, of our community, by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that women have played a unique role throughout the history of our community by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the community and school district. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and the movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of March, two thousand twenty-four to be Women's History Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of women to the development and prosperity of our community.
Next up is the approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Motion carries. Next up is audience time. Do we have anyone who has signed up for audience time tonight? Okay. Won't be reading that. Uh, next up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I hope that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Pantoja that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? The motion carries. Next up, reports and discussions. We have a first reading, of course, for AP History. I see some of the usual suspects in the crowd.
Good evening, everyone. I first want to celebrate, this is the last course of the year, and we have been through nine together, so let's celebrate that. I know, so let's start with that. Um, I want to introduce Director of Teaching and Learning for Secondary, Becky Kingsmith, as well as longstanding educator for Glencoe High School, Rebecca Clark. Tonight, we also have our Chair for CCAC, Joe Everton, and a special shout out and thank you to Principal Roof for being here to support us as well in our ninth course of the year. So with that, Becky Kingsmith will kick us off.
I'm just going to leave it brief and then hand it over to Rebecca to take you through the course. Just as a reminder, our course proposals, when proposed and if approved by the school board can be offered at any of our high schools. Today, we are presenting an AP course, so we have three of our high schools that offer the Advanced Placement Program, so that would be Liberty, Glencoe, and Century. So with that, I will introduce Rebecca Clark to take you a little bit through the course we're proposing today, AP Art History.
Good evening. Glad that I'm the last one, maybe the best for last, we'll put it that way. Um, so I am proposing to bring forward the AP Art History course. This is a course proposed, created by the College Board. And so what it covers is it covers all of art history from global prehistory to present time, covering two hundred and fifty selected pieces of art. These pieces are paintings, fine art paintings, architecture, sculpture, performance pieces, whole gamut, covering a wide range of areas, which I'll show you here in a second. The reason why this course is being proposed is this provides an opportunity for students to access something that's in their everyday life. We're a very visual society. We operate underneath visual communication all the time with emojis, with gifs, just we are bombarded with images all the time already. And what I have found in my history classes is that students are very visual communicators. They're really great at analyzing imagery, and so this would allow us to harness that and use it for a skill that we need in our everyday lives. So this would really increase those analytical skills, which students need and humans need, with a medium that they're comfortable with, is really what this allows. What it covers is a wide range of locations all over the entire history, as you can see here, and all over the world. So from global prehistory with cave paintings from everywhere, all the way to contemporary art done by Ai Weiwei in China, Kara Wilters Basquiat, as you have right there, kind of every continent and every time period from three hundred thousand to present day. So a wide range within those two hundred and fifty pieces. As I already mentioned, the rationale and outcome, the whole purpose of this is to be a social studies elective, but could help with many of our already CTE classes, from marketing to fine arts, to theater architectural drafting as well, because we do talk about architecture in that. So it could be a nice complement for any of our other CCP CTE courses, not just as a history elective, but as a history elective, it is a great complement for students who are attempting the chancellor's diploma. One of the requirements for a chancellor's diploma is an AP course, or at least an elective social studies or science course, so this could fit both of those. And then, as it says here, the other opportunities is because it isn't a College Board AP course, there's the opportunity for college credit if students elect to take the test in May. And then just that analysis and interpretation skills of looking at an image, breaking it down, getting as much meaning as you possibly can with that. And then access and opportunity. For me, what I've seen in my classes is whenever I talk about art, all students are engaged. So my hope with this class is that students who might not see themselves as the quote unquote AP student, who might be a little discouraged from the reading that might be needed in some of the traditional history courses, this would allow for that ability for students to feel that they could be more successful. And then the other big thing that happens with this course is it actually has a pretty high pass rate of a three or higher on the national level. So students across the country have been successful in this course. So it's not that they've just been challenged, but they have shown success while taking it.
Good evening. So I'll just start with the numbers. So fourteen recommend and one abstention. We had some good discussion about this and these are a few questions that we had from our discussion. You can also read the notes for some more of that. There were just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. One was, I think, mentioned, this class reaches out to some students who might not otherwise get engaged with AP, which is a really valuable thing. AP brings all kinds of things with it, with rigor and college prep that are really valuable, and this can make that accessible to even more students, which is great. Also, there was a question about what about if a student or a family or a parent isn't comfortable with a particular piece of art? The nice thing here is the two hundred and fifty pieces, was it two hundred and fifty? Of art are already selected from the get-go, and you know what they are. And also, they can opt out of a lesson by working with the building administrator and teacher, since it's, it's APs nationally administered, they, it may still be on the test, right? This is similar to how we would have to deal with AP Lit, right? But, but they'll work where they can. Yeah, and I gave, I gave the numbers. So it, it's interesting to see something like art, which is so, can be so subjective, but have a rigorous AP test given to it, right? And learning these kinds of skills, so it's, it's exciting. Thanks.
So with that, we are open to any questions or feedback before we close our last and final first reading of the year.
I just wish that I could take these classes like the other one.
Yeah. I see thirty students we required for a section, so is best guess, like, how many of the three buildings, what do we think we can expect?
Rebecca did a great job speaking to that for CCAC presentations, so I'll let her share part of that. From feedback that I've seen in our, our world history, which is the ninth grade classes, there is definitely a need, or a want, I should say. So having thirty is usually what we would need for us, a building to schedule it, and that would definitely be available. And then if it is a social studies course, it could be offered every other year with some of our elective social studies. So with like AP world history or AP art history going every other year could ensure that you have the, the want and the need there. That would be a way to deal with that.
And like to Joe's point, like opening up the opportunity to more AP students, like to get some availability there, I think.
And once students are successful, what I have found is it, once one group is successful, they talk about it and then more students will want to take it, and that's kind of what it is.
Patrick?
Thank you. This is one of the courses I'm most excited to hear about. Very wonderful thing. I'm curious, did we have non-AP courses on art history previously, or is this the first course of any type on art history that we'll be offering now?
Currently, no, this would be our first art history course. We do have like fine art courses, but not anything on the like analysis and examination of art history aspect of it.
I was reading a quote on the National Endowment for the Arts website that the arts extend our lives, not because they make our lives longer, but because we're able to inhabit other perspectives and in history and understand other cultures in a way we wouldn't be able to otherwise, so they extend the width of our life that way. And so I'm very excited for this. Thank you for the bell.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you guys for being here. All right, next up is a strategic plan implementation. Oh, Beth is going to microphone, all right.
As my colleague Beth Grazer is coming up, I just would like to share how excited we are to give this update. You know, I, I believe that our goal of, of creating something that isn't just on paper and that you don't see on the walls and you don't see in a glossy handup, but a living, breathing document is true, truly what we're creating. So with this update tonight, I hope that you see that, I hope you see not only the qualitative feedback that we're getting from our students and our families, but also the feedback that we're constantly getting from our building administrators and our team here in teaching and learning and within the admin center. So we're really excited to present tonight what our mid-year findings are, and then also to see that progression until the end of the year. So we're driving here. All right. Okay, so just have a couple of establishing slides here to re-ground us in some of the big framework aspects of our strategic plan. Here you see our Portrait of a Graduate, which has four major components of empowered learners, inquisitive scholars, collaborative communicators, and community collaborators. And then our, of course, our promise to know value and empower every student to achieve their dreams, which sits nice and large right behind your heads there and signed by hundreds of our staff members, pretty cool. And then our organizing framework is these five major goal areas. So success in the early years, safe and supported learners, access and opportunity, critical thinking and problem solving, and graduating ready for career, college, and life. Within those five major goal areas, we do have fifteen goals. I hope that doesn't sound overwhelming, but then what's elevated out of those fifteen goals are our five performance targets. And those five performance targets are things that are aligned within our integrated guidance, that kind of that overarching framework that kind of is an umbrella for a lot of our other work as it relates to Student Success Act, Student Investment Account, Measure Ninety-eight, Attendance Initiatives, and all those other things. So as we hold ourselves accountable to this strategic plan, we are organized, we kind of came up with this nice little visual to showcase how we focus on the community, our schools, and our central office, and those are kind of buckets of work and focal areas for us to gather feedback and make sure that we're adequately communicating our plan. So you can see some of the different aspects under community, being the gathering of family and student feedback, which we'll share some highlights with you later in this presentation. With our schools folks, we do our data digs. Brooke will share a little bit more about that. We have our, our second data collection summit coming up next week. Third, sorry, third one. And then here at the central office, we're working on tracking all of that data and making sure that it's accessible to our administrators so they can do real-time work in their buildings. Whoops, that went ahead two times. Let's go back to that. Here's another very cool graphic, thank you, Alano. And this we showed to you in October, and it was our plan for the remainder of the year, when major things were going to happen with some of our different focal groups. You can see the different meetings that were planned with our PAC groups, and two sets of those have already been carried out by Francesca and her team. And again, we'll have some highlights from those in subsequent slides. I did go ahead and link our student strategic plan video, I don't know that we'll show it here, but it is available to you if you haven't had a chance to see it yet. And that was the subject of an advisory lesson at the high school level in January for our high school students, basically just ensuring that they know that their voice has been heard and it does matter, and it was a major foundational element of the development of our strategic plan. So here is just, again, this is a snapshot of our dashboard that is on our website at our website slash SP Dashboard is a nice friendly link, you can get to it at any time. And this just gives kind of a glance at how we fared in those five goal areas with our five performance targets as part of integrated guidance, plus one little snippet of student voice data, which isn't part of integrated guidance, but it is an important part, we feel, of our plan is making sure that student voice is heard and that students feel that they belong in our system. So again, for some of these, they do align with ways that the state measures various target areas, for example, attendance, that's something that would, would be the same what we collect and the, and what the state has. But other things like reading proficiency, we have talked to you about this before, that we like to use something called running records. It gives us a little bit more accurate look at how students are progressing in their learning and gives us the opportunity to make some more real-time adjustments than just that single, you know, state level assessment that's taken in the spring. And that's just that one-time, one-and-done thing that we see on the October school and district report cards, which is another thing I wanted to mention, because those had just come out when we talked to you last time. And that data gets kind of combined with some other fall data that's collected by districts and sent by ODE and then other state education organizations to the federal government, and they crunch some numbers and run it through a bunch of systems. And if anybody remembers kind of the old structure of NCLB and how we had different structures back, you know, many years ago about schools that maybe weren't living up to some of the thresholds that were thought to be adequate, and then students could transfer on, on those bases, well, that has been revamped. And under the current system, there is something called targeted and comprehensive intervention supports that are given to schools that are found to be in need of some buoying up with their statistics in different areas. And those are very detailed and granular down to the subgroup level, perhaps it's a certain subgroup of students that's having difficulty achieving attendance levels, and so maybe a school will be identified as in need of support for that kind of improvement. So we found out late in the year, December timeframe, that we've got ten schools that are either getting targeted or comprehensive school support, so that equates to about five hundred thousand dollars that's available to those schools to work on targeted interventions in those areas, and those schools are currently working on their plans to be implemented for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So just so you're aware of that. And the next several slides, Brooke is going to take over and share some data with. And the next several slides, Brooke is going to take over and share some data within each of our main goal areas.
So in goal one, this is just up to remind us of, of this goal. We will have our updated running records provided and this, and the slide updated when we do our final report to you that will take place in, in August. But I know that Gina McLean is currently working on gathering the running records data and looking at that. And also, Audrey and Gina did a great job on the January ninth meeting going in depth about our early literacy work. The other piece too, is that in that, in our grant that we have applied to and also presented here before, we are just finalizing some revisions and hopefully we'll get that up and running this school year as well. So what I also wanted to call out though is we've had an opportunity to listen to half of our building administrators thus far in the last week or so. And the excitement that they speak to in their own building data that's connected to their SIP plans, that's connected to our strategic plans, has been really, I think, beneficial in just that connection from strategic plan to SIP plan to what we're seeing and what is also on this update as well to the work that Gina and team are doing to hopefully see that increase in our literacy scores. So here's something that's really exciting here is an update for mid-year. Something that I also knows of an interest to our board members is attendance. So so far, mid-year, overall, we have about a 5% increase in attendance from the beginning of the school year to semester one. And then we also see some great gains in attendance specific to our focal groups. So I know that you've had a moment to look at that data, but I do want to call out in those specific focal groups that our students who identify as Native American, Alaskan Native are up over twenty percentage points in the first semester. And then our students who identify as Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander are up over twelve percentage points as well. So the attention again, I think in our buildings and the great work that they're doing. I also just did a board update a couple of weeks ago to talk about the new cohort that we're going to be involved in through, through AASA, to also just continue to engage in what are best practices that we're seeing in attendance across our state? How do we learn from one another? How do we continue this focus not only on data, but in the practices that we hope we will learn from one another to support our students and families in attending school? Thank you to Superintendent Ryman. Thank you again to Francesca. What we had also presented in October was that not only would we be providing that quantitative update, but we'd also be providing some feedback that connects to our goals as well, right? Because as part of that living, breathing document, we want to ensure that we're getting that feedback. So Superintendent Ryman is, has almost completed all of his building focal groups within our high schools. And so here's just a few of the highlights from what students are sharing. This one is specific to goal two. A lot of the, of the feedback from our students was that our educators are welcoming and that the professional development that we have provided specifically to gender identity, they are seeing within their buildings and the appreciation for that and the inclusive environments that they feel in their schools. Something that they did call out was how do we continue to support our students in their learning in that? And the recommendation from our students of just that continued education from elementary to high school around anti-bullying and bias. From our families, just the also appreciation for the learning that's been provided from Francesca and team. And specifically just a continuation of learning around bullying prevention, again, kind of similar to what we're hearing from our students. And then also just that continual communication loop. So appreciation for the families and that direct communication. And then how do we just make those bullying incident reports? How do we make that more efficient and accessible so that they can be sharing what they are hearing other from their students or what they're seeing and, and make sure that they have an easy way to be reporting that? Okay, so this next goal in goal three, this is specific to our extracurriculars. And I do want to make a note that this scale looks a little different than our other ones. This scale is from a 25% to a 45% scale, which, which means that the data lines are just going to look a little bit more dramatic than our other ones. That was to decompress those, those line points and help just visually to show this. I would report though, that at the end of the year in 2223 to semester one, we actually are at an 80% mark to where we were at in 2223. So the team led by Ryan believe that by the end of the year, we will see an increase than what we saw from the 2223 school year in extracurriculars and activities. You'll also see again that we have a call out to our focal groups as well. And there is currently a slight decrease in our focal groups. But again, we'll have that full report by the end of the year to see where we, where we end up.
Brooke, can you explain why that's deceptive? Like why we wouldn't count this as a downward trend?
Yeah, okay, so because this only accounts to fall and winter enrollment data and we don't have our spring data yet to this. So, so this only accounts to our fall and winter activities and athletics, whereas the 2223 is a full report of fall, winter, and spring participation.
Thank you.
Did that clarify?
At first I thought, oh gosh, our efforts are for nothing. What's actually happening is that we're just documenting this. We're giving you a mid-year report, but at the end of the year, you'll see the line.
Yeah.
Go up, hopefully.
Because there are a lot of activities in the spring that just aren't offered in the fall.
Right, like track just opened yesterday. That's a, it's a huge athletic in our high schools. That is a lot of students who participate in track, for example. So these numbers don't account for any of our golf, of tennis, of baseball, softball, track. And then also all of the students who participate in clubs and activities after a mid-year club rush, for example. So we should see those numbers at the end of the year report be at least on par or higher. Okay, again, so some of the student and family feedback that we have gathered as part of this report. So students appreciating that there is a robust offering of opportunities for all students. But again, you'll see, and I think tonight, our HR team did a great job of, how do we continue to diversify staff to reflect our students? So, so students sharing, we'd love to see more diversity within our staff and coaches who are connected to these activities and athletics. An appreciation for the welcoming environment that has been created, continuing to promote and seek more students to represent within those activities and athletics. And then also a call out from students of how do we continue that partnership within our community to support in those athletics and activities as well? The family side, the, the ask of, hey, how do we just continue to engage in activities? How do we sign up to volunteer? And again, the appreciation for extracurriculars and those opportunities that students have, but just that continual learning and knowing of how to not only help support their student, but themselves to help support that as well. So on track, so you'll see that of course, we have two on-track definitions, one that we use from the Oregon Department of Education and then our Hillsborough School District on-track definition. That is slightly more robust, focusing on the core for that on-track data marker. And with Becky in the audience, I do want to call out what's appreciation for having semester one real-time data is being able to provide that to the team. So her and David, having this information, the very next day was working with our on-track coaches, the very next day, sharing information with on-track teams of, okay, let's look at our data. Slightly down, and so how do we continue to improve? Specifically for our students who identify as Hispanic, Latina, Latino, Latinx. Okay, in that mid-year, what do we need to do revise our action plans? How do we help support our buildings to attending to the next semester in practice? So that our data, at the end of the year, we can hopefully see an increase or a growth in some of these areas. So just slightly down in our overall metric. About 5% down again in our students who identify as Hispanic, Latinx, and then slightly up for students who are accessing our special education services. In our graduation data, again, Audrey and David did an amazing job presenting a couple of weeks ago. So I don't, I don't necessarily need to go to a lot of information here. As Beth shared, we had our final report from Oregon Department of Education, which closed out the data set so that we can compare year to year. But just that continuation of how do we ensure that all students? Uh-oh. Did the battery go out? Here it is. Okay. Well, I'll take us to the next slide, which is fifth year data. But what I was going to say is how do we continue to not only support our students in that four-year cohort, but then how do we continue to focus on that fifth year cohort? I know that next month, Executive Director of High Schools, David Missalanic, is going to be sharing about our Oak Street campus and our Pathway Center. But I think this is a true testament to the work, the focus, the intention during COVID to ensure that we were preparing and supporting our students in that fifth year completion beyond. How do we ensure that students have access after hours to support in that completion? So we're definitely seeing a growth in this area. And a lot of that focus of the work during that 2020 school year and beyond is paying off in our data. Okay, so in that, here's our high school student feedback again, and our family feedback. Call up for our students, appreciating the robust offerings with increased college pathways, and also the support, not only highlighting our two and four-year programs, but our technical education and trade opportunities after high school as well. And then something that they shared is a continuation of support of counseling, talking about barriers to graduation. How do we help remove those? What types of questions do they have? I think that also connects well with our on-track data as well of, you know, when I am failing a class, how does that impact my graduation? What types of supports in real time can I access to ensure success to graduation? And then again, our families saying the same thing. They really appreciate the support for career and college preparation. And then again, seeking more information for opportunities of post-venture, or sorry, post-secondary preparation as well and how, how do they continue to be trained and support students throughout their high school journey? Okay, Beth's going to talk a little bit about our community survey and what we've learned from that. And then we'll wrap up for any questions that you may have.
All right, so this past November, we ran our second community-wide strategic plan survey. And it was the exact same set of questions as we used in the fall of 2022. We had ninety-nine more participants this year than last. And have to give credit for our family outreach liaisons who were really pushing the opportunity with our families. We had flyers up at the parent teacher conferences, the week of Thanksgiving with QR codes so that people could take the survey. And in these couple of slides, you can see just some high-level overviews, categories of results with some slight decreases. I think what we've learned in looking at these last two years of results, it was a forty-one, I think, question Likert, Likert scale questions. And we found ourselves kind of wondering, what is this data really telling us? And, you know, with even with 274 respondents, it's technically not statistically significant in terms of our overall population. And so I think we're going to take a look at possibly revamping how we offer that survey in the future years to be much smaller in terms of fewer numbers of questions, perhaps with some prompts, some, you know, a little bit more grounding information. And then the opportunity to possibly weigh in with, with a free response box so that we get more of those. We understand more of what these families are telling us. And hopefully, maybe that can match a little bit more with the kind of the in-person focus group experience that Francesca is able to have with our PACs. So I think moving forward, we might look into a model that's a little bit closer to, to that kind of focus group experience with our, with our community survey. So as Brooke mentioned, the third final data summit is going to take place next Tuesday at our PK-12 admin meeting. And then we have our annual survey of students in upper elementary through high school grades. They take that in May. And so that'll be a great foundation of our work heading into year two of the strategic plan. And obviously, we have all of OSP working on some aspect of data tracking for our various fifteen goals that we are working on. And then as we kind of wrap up year one data, starting, you know, in, in May-June timeframe and are planning our professional development heading into year two based on that data and also compiling our full year one report to be presented at the board retreat in August.
Questions, comments?
Erica? I had a couple of questions. One, I was thinking about, there was a slide with the ninth grade on track that didn't have that additional feedback, that feedback from student PAC. Yeah, that one. So it didn't, it just, that specific goal didn't have that slide. So I was wondering if there was a way, I guess, of how do we gather feedback of what has worked for those nine graders on, you know? And like, do we share best practices amongst our staff? Or, or what do our parents feel like? You know, they participated in some of that help in the previous year? What worked for them or not?
So in the questions that were asked in the superintendent rounds, we didn't specifically have something around ninth grade on track. But in that next semester, what I know that Becky and team are working on is that also the continuation of kid talk and feedback. So I think what we could do to provide that in our final report is some additional feedback from our students and staff and families connected to kid talks and the work that's been done and provide that in, in that arena. Also, Francesca has a couple of more family cycles as well. So she could incorporate that too, to get some of that, that parent feedback as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then around this, I know the survey, I think by seeing the results too, we only had one student participate. But I, I do think their surveys tend to be really easy for some members of our community to use, but not everybody. And so I, I do like seeing the use of what we already have, like the PACs, to get some information and data, collect some data, but also wanting to figure out like a strategy for students and engaging in that. I really want to have that data be part of the story that we tell as the years progress and hearing that student voice and how we're changing, that they're participating and giving us feedback. So I'm really happy to hear that we're rethinking about how we're going to do that, that metric. And lastly, I wanted to ask before our board is especially like this year, like looking, we have one year comparison, we will have one year comparison, but maybe for our retreat, what of all of these items that are on here, especially the feedback from students and PACs? What are things that are actionable for board to do? Is there a policy that we might have to really look at? Or is there a resource, like I saw one of them around, you know, wanting more resources for the extracurricular activities? There's like barriers to participate. So what are things that as a board, we can see that it might take board action or, or something from us? And maybe that contributes to our discussion in our retreat.
That's great. I'm taking note of that. And Beth and I will work on that for that end of the year report. That's great.
Oh, of course. I just wanted to respond to the, to the survey thing and just, just to make sure everybody is aware. So that survey data that we showed was just the community survey. The student survey happens annually in May and is given to all students.
The student survey happens annually in May and is given to all students. And just for frame of reference, about 6,000 students completed that last year. So we get great representation out of our students. Obviously, we're hoping for much more because the greater breadth of participation that we have, you know, the more actionable that data becomes. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And I feel like there was a second thing that you mentioned that I wanted to talk about. Oh, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn here, but I'll say it and then my colleagues can jump on me if I'm wrong. But one of the things, as it relates to ninth grade on track, I think one of the things we've done to try to help kids get a great running start into high school are those eighth-grade summer programs where students are identified as maybe needing some assistance with that transition. And so another great reason to push our legislators in the short session to free up some summer school money, because that's one of those programs that I think we've found to be pretty successful in the past.
Depending on
Depending on when we get the money.
On where we're at for funding. I think that determines how much we allocate.
Towards our middle schools currently with the funds that we've had, we've really focused on that high school support and then also some jumpstart programs supporting our youngest learners. So really, that middle school component depends on the amount of funding that we see in the future of that middle school to high school transition. But for us currently, really, the funding and resources have gone to that high school support more if we're thinking of secondary to just ensure that graduation success, which is such a focus for us, has really been the use of the funds the last couple of years.
You made differentiation between community survey. So 23 staff members is just that they identified both as staff and community. That's why they participated? Or was it open to all staff? Is there considered part of our community?
It was open. It was, you know, and even having one student participate, that was a question like, do we even give a category for students? We don't really want students taking this one. And I said, well, but we wouldn't want to discourage it if somebody was so moved to complete it. So yeah, it was completely up to, it was just an open survey and we promoted it. And the city was kind enough to cross-promote it for us. So it was just really kind of coalition of the willing. We, of course, tried to encourage people to fill it out so that we had their voice if they weren't able to participate in one of these more intimate family engagement meetings that Francesca helped coordinate. So, yeah.
Forty-one questions. We have any metrics on how many people started it and then didn't finish? Well, if I saw that I had 38 more to go, I probably wouldn't complete it.
Point well taken.
Maybe not this one, no, HSD one, of course I would.
Of course.
I'm saying generally, if I if I if I fall for a click on the survey link and it says 38 more to go, I might not finish it.
It'd be nice to be able to say, we have a survey that's five questions long. Please give us five minutes of your time.
Other questions?
All right. Thank you all.
Next up, discussion, well, first reading of this particular version of the calendar.
Good evening. So in the packet is a list with all the bullets for the 24, 25 proposed calendar that we are looking at and with hopes of adopting next month's board meeting. A couple of things I just wanted to point out is I appreciate first, the conversations that we've had about the calendar. As I shared before, I've learned a lot through those communications. But this calendar is a post-Labor Day start. And there are a couple of things that are different in regards to this calendar. So our new license in service and family connections time is all going to be a part of the calendar. We will put that on a Wednesday, August 24th, or excuse me, 28, 2024, because we want to have that opportunity to connect with our students and families prior to school starting. This year, we held it on Friday and we found just moving that two days earlier in the week was something that we wanted to target based on feedback. Another thing that we were also looking at is that we've heard feedback from our classified staff and partners, union partners, that we want to increase the number of days for them to have opportunity for professional development, also to support the family connections time. And so based on that feedback, we've adjusted, we'll be adjusting their work calendars to support family connections and transitions in those days. So the licensed in-service days after conversations with our union partners for licensed, we are going to be transitioning this next year. And so Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday will be the week of August 26, 27, and 29 will be our in-service days. And then we will go into Friday being a non-contract day for all staff. And then on September 3, we'll have an additional day for license in service. So that'll be something different that we will be bringing forward into this calendar. And the placement of the connections day is still within that in-service week. And I think this allows for an additional day for classified and licensed staff to connect prior to starting with students. And part of that was that those feedback conversations that we heard through our listening sessions and through our conversations and labor management. So then students would start in grades one through six, seven, nine on Wednesday, September 4, and kindergarten and eighth grade and 10 through 12 would join on Thursday, September 5. And so the rest of the calendar remains pretty much the same of what we've had this year. But those are kind of the key pieces that are a little bit different in regards to our forthcoming school year. Are there any questions?
I appreciate you highlighting the differences, but would it be fair to say this represents the least amount of change compared to previous calendars generally of the ones we consider?
Yes, because those were pre-Labor Day starts.
Yeah, and even the other one, post-Labor Day last time. Yeah, okay. Questions? I think we've asked a lot of questions over the, yeah. So I get that it's comfortable and familiar, but in the spirit of continuous improvement, I look forward to what our community brings forward for us next year.
Yep, thank you so much. So this will be up for first reading.
And then so next, the first, the only meeting in March will be adopting this.
Yes, that's the plan. I think we need to get that out in front of our community.
Yeah, I think that's right. Yeah, we can't wait any longer. All right.
Thank you.
Next up is the financial report.
Thank you, Chair Watson. I, just a quick note and the narrative, I want to just give some appreciation for Kim Hall. She's been with the district for 27 years and has submitted a mid-year retirement notice. So I'm just very thankful to have time with her and have her support our transition for a new payroll supervisor. So shout out to Kim and I am happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Questions on the financial report? All right. Thank you. All right, we move to our action item portion of the agenda. Oh, I did, I'm sorry, backwards. I didn't want to know, like, the top of that calendar says confidential draft, but like legit, it's in the package, so it doesn't feel all that confidential anymore, right? Okay, all right. Felt weird. All right, first action item is to approve the Northwest Regional ESD Plan that we discussed upstairs. Somebody have any questions before we want to make a motion? I mean, for those of you who are with us upstairs, we have an opportunity to discuss the presentation with the representative for Northwest ESD upstairs. So would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the resolution approving the Northwest Regional Education Service District Local Service Plan for 2024, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Pantoja and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors adopt the resolution approving the Northwest Regional Education Service District Local Service Plan for 2024, 2025. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you please call the roll?
Erica Lopez.
Hi.
Patrick McGuire. Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye, motion carries. All right, next up, approve the courses one at a time, right? That we put on first reading last year or last week, last meeting, sorry. Would anybody like to move for the first one?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course IB Environmental Systems and Societies.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course IB Environmental Systems and Societies. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you please call the roll?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye, motion carries. Next up, would anybody like to take that one?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course IB Self-Guided Language and Literature.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director Pantoja that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course IB Self-Guided Languages and Literature. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can please call the roll?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye, motion carries. I'm going to take the last one. I move that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course UAS Operation Drones.
Second.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course UAS Operation Drones. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, we'd like to take it too.
Yeah, we'd all like to take this class, I think. Yeah, yeah, we have audience members that want to take this class. I still have to renew the license on my current drone. Yeah, a month and a half, whatever. Rose, can you please call the roll?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye, motion carries. Our last action item involves the purchase of school buses. We have the situation page and scoring criteria in our packet materials. Sayeda, do you want to add anything else?
Only that this is to award the bid for the buses and then I'll come back at a later time with the actual purchase. So it'll be in two parts.
Any questions for Sayeda? Yeah, go ahead.
I know a lot of times we, my colleagues submit questions in advance by email, but I try to, I think there are things people watching might be interested in, I try to ask them during this. So if it's something that is more complicated, feel free to follow up by email, no worries about that. But I want
Have the Executive Director of Transportation on.
Really?
Yeah, she's hearing this, so we can probably answer it. She probably has the answer if I don't.
Sure, sure, thank you. Well, really, it relates to why we're purchasing gasoline and to a lesser degree propane buses instead of all electric buses in this package. I know a lot of people are concerned about the carbon emission from diesel and gasoline buses. I'm more, I think moving to electric buses is more promising because of the, to me personally, it's more important because of the localized health effects. We know that diesel and gasoline-powered buses expose a lot of fine particulate matter and a lot of nitrogen oxide that gets very linked to asthma and respiratory illness. And so I'm very much a pro bonus of the move to electric buses. I know New York State is looking at a limiting mandate that in 2027 cuts off diesel and gasoline-powered bus purchases in all school districts in that state. So I'm curious what, I know that about this past summer, we took our first delivery of electric buses. And so I'm wondering what, why we're moving forward with gasoline buses in this state.
I bet cost, but.
Carol, are you there?
I am here. Can you all hear me?
Can, Carol, thank you.
Yes, we can.
All right, well, I think I can answer that for you. We are looking at ways to obviously meet that new carb emission standard. One of the reasons that we chose to go forward with looking at gas is one of the vendors is currently just manufacturing a gasoline engine that does meet that NOX requirement that you were you were asking about. So it would actually meet the 0.02 NOX standard. A couple of other reasons we are still looking and expanding the electric school bus. There are some concerns with the electric school bus just as far as the infrastructure that we currently have in our area. Our district, as you know, is very diverse in its geographic makeup. And while we know we don't want to do diesel anymore for all the obvious reasons, propane and gas will still get us where we need to go and give us the needed infrastructure when we're talking about taking kids on trips to far destinations where we may not be able to charge buses. So one of the bids that we're asking approval to award is for electric school bus, to add additional one, which right now we own two. There's a third one ordered and on its way, and this would be additional as we also look to expand our charging system hopefully in the next couple of years.
I really, I really appreciate that information. That's good to know. I may follow up with a few more questions down the road. I know that I'm just one-seventh of the board, but my opinion is that the propane industry has put a lot of money into marketing themselves as a cleaner alternative to diesel. But I think propane still does, the EPA would show, have some particulate emissions. And so moving to electric is really where we want, what we want to get to for our communities and the children's health in our communities. That's the ultimate goal from my perspective.
And looking at the bid proposals, Carol, are the electric buses about two and a half times a conventional bus expense-wise? Or is it three?
That's correct. They are very, they are very expensive. You know, there's always the hope that as the industry expands in more of the heavy equipment category, that prices will come down. I often say it's kind of like when we first got, you know, VCRs back in the day, you know? The first one I think we bought was 600 bucks and then you could get them for $49. So, you know, there's always that hope. I think also we have to look at many things in school buses when you go to electric, not only the infrastructure, but the, what it's taking to keep them charged in the cold weather and heat. And I do believe that the industry is getting better. I would love, love, love to have an opportunity to talk with you more about it. It certainly is an interesting industry that we're coming into. And as we've started dabbling our toe into it, it has been very interesting to learn the different things, you know, the size of a bus with kids in it versus a car. It's been a real interesting journey that we have been going down.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of a pilot project and I kind of consider the two we have as a pilot project, you know, with help from the state and PGE and whatnot. So, yeah, it's still relatively new and learning what we didn't know feels pretty valuable. I'd also say, if you love an opportunity to have that discussion with members of the board, I'm still yet to be invited on a trip on the electric bus. So, you know, I would love that up as somebody who's had an electric car for nine years, I would love to have an opportunity to ride in that electric bus.
We will have to look into that. We keep those two electric buses we have right now pretty busy with kids in them, but maybe on a non-school day, we'll bring you on down.
Yeah, I'm not bumping a kid off, Ryan, I get it. All right, that's fine.
Well, we'll keep Mark from bumping kids off of buses. But I do want to say that I really appreciate the fact that you recognize where the industry is right now. The infrastructure is not there, unfortunately. If you think back to when we began to sell electric cars, fully electric cars, they were horrifically expensive and there was no infrastructure. And so it took honestly 10 to 15 years before we had the infrastructure to even, one, afford them, two, then to maintain them. And we are still struggling with that as some of the car manufacturers are dealing with that as of now, right? You want to roll out the car, but you don't have the infrastructure to to actually charge it. So three is great. Let's roll with that for a little bit. And I honestly believe that probably in five to seven years, those buses those buses will need to be replaced and there'll be a whole different genre out by that time. Um, so I, I, I appreciate-
Looks like we're working on a fourth too, yeah.
I, I really do. I appreciate the, but you still gotta wait till the technology can get us there. And can we please have a ride on the bus?
I'll go where the kids are going.
I did have a, a question as well. Mine was just mostly on the process for procuring these. It looks like we did a request for proposal and I'm wondering, like, this seems like something that every school district buys as buses. Isn't there a, a cooperative purchasing agreement that we could have gone or why was, why was this bid it out instead of like, is there something, it seems like something that's bought often by districts?
It's correct. Um, and that we can buy off cooperative bids from other school districts. Um, doing RFPs is, is a long process. Um, we have not done one since about 2017, I think. Um, this particular time, the reason um, why my staff and I decided we would, we would go out for an RFP is because we were, we wanted to dabble a little bit and see what, what more was out there that we could get specifically around um, electric as well as propane. Um, price increases for school buses has gone up dramatically since uh, the pandemic. And so it's not, RFPs is a lot of work. And, and I always, every time I finish one, I said, never donate again. But um, it does help us keep competitive, I feel like. And um, it, it gives you a chance to really get into conversations, deep conversations with vendors and see what's out there. Um, like I said, specifically um, with the electric vehicles because there are many, many different companies coming on board right now.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you for holding your feet to the fire, Director McGuire. I think it's a good thing for us to be thinking about. And uh, Executive Director Hadfield, thank you for being with us tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Now it's pretty cold out there and there's some precipitation, so hopefully 4:30 doesn't come too early for you.
Thank you.
Would anybody care to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors award the bid for school bus purchases to Peterson Bus Sales, Western Bus Sales and Service, and Shetky Bus and Van Sales.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors award the bid for school bus purchases to Peterson Bus Sales, Western Bus Sales and Service, and Shetky Bus and Van Sales. Is there any further discussion?
Hopefully. I'd just briefly like to say that I intend to oppose this motion. Um, but I, it's not a reflection on the hard work of the transportation team who do great work. It's just a reflection of all the reading I've done about parents groups across the nation who have been advocating for increased urgency to move away from diesel and gasoline powered buses because of the research on how much time children spend around idling buses and how, what the effect that has on their health. So I appreciate the practical concerns. I just intend to uh, make a point about what direction we need to be going in, but I, I do appreciate all the great work our, our teams are doing.
Any further discussion? Rose can please call the roll.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
No.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. That concludes the action item portion of our agenda. We are to HCU and HEA reports. I see we have two guests with us. Would you, do you guys have decided who goes first? Oh, all right.
Okay. Um, good evening, School Board, Chair Watson, Superintendent Ryman, Student Representatives, Cabinet and Community Members. I'm Cara Hartzell, the Bargaining Officer for Hillsborough Classified United. And I'm here tonight to answer what is one of my favorite questions, how is bargaining going? Since the January School Board meeting, HCU has attended two bargaining sessions with the school district. During last week's session, we were pleased to settle our ground rules for negotiation as well as to offer two proposals for Article Nine and Article Twenty-Five of our current contract. Now, I know that not everyone here eats, sleeps, and breathes the contract the way that our bargaining teams do. So I'd like to offer a brief explanation of these articles and of our proposals on them. Article Nine discusses our district's policy for rest and meal breaks. Our school-based staff have very busy schedules and unfortunately, we know that many of them are not consistently receiving their breaks. We all agree that this needs to change. Our proposal would provide many staff members with an additional 15-minute paid break each day, which would align with the current Bureau of Labor and Industry guidelines. It would also provide protections for staff whose meal breaks are interrupted, delayed, or skipped by requiring, requiring their supervisors to pay extended contract time for any missed meal breaks. Article Twenty-Five covers classified reporting procedures for emergency school closures. Incluent weather reporting and how we make up missed work time is a source of confusion for classified staff every year. And our proposal for this article, if accepted, would simplify our current policy, ensuring all staff members are fully paid during any emergency school closures. Remote work or use of paid leave would not be needed. And makeup days would only be required for student-facing staff if additional contract days or student contact days are added to the calendar. This language would match the contract for HEA, our licensed partners, as well as the contracts for classified staff in all of our surrounding districts. In addition, our proposal would ensure that all essential employees receive overtime pay for reporting to buildings during emergency closures. These staff often travel and work in hazardous conditions to ensure that our students have safe buildings to return to after inclement weather. And we want to make sure that they're compensated appropriately for that work. Our bargaining team is proud to represent more than 1,300 classified staff who make HSD a great place to work and to learn. Likewise, our classified staff has proudly shown up in support of the bargaining process by wearing their HCU T-shirts, logging into the bargaining livestream, creating signs, watching recording, recorded sessions, and even showing up in person at the Administration Center after their work hours to watch the bargaining proceedings. Over the past month, our organization has grown dramatically. We've added new voices to our leadership team as well as a record number of new dues-paying union members. And the message from our classified staff is clear. They are engaged and supportive of the work that we're doing at the bargaining table, and they are eager to see changes in our contract. During last week's bargaining session, Conaloo Williams shared a vision that HSD might become a destination district for educational professionals in Oregon. At HCU, we share that vision and we look forward to turning it into a reality through ongoing and collaborative work at the bargaining table. As I wrap up my comments for this evening, I wanted to acknowledge next week's Classified Appreciation Week, an annual celebration of gratitude for the staff who make so much of what we do here possible. I would encourage everyone to reach out to classified staff who have supported you and thank them for the work that they do. As we like to say at HCU, our classified staff clean it, cook it, fix it, drive it, paint it, teach it, type it, schedule it, plant it, file it. We support, love, and believe in our students, and we are proud to be HSD. Thank you for your time.
There might even be a T-shirt that says that.
I've seen the posters. I'm sure they could put that on a T-shirt. Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Pantoja, fellow board members, Superintendent Ryman, and administrative leaders. My name is Mary Kay Babcock. My pronouns are she, her, eh. I'm a proud ed- I am a proud educator and the Hillsborough Education Association President, representing and speaking on behalf of our licensed educators. It is with deep honor that I express my heartfelt gratitude for our members' trust and confidence in re-electing me to serve as their president. Their steadfast support is truly humbling and inspiring. I'm fully committed to share the journey of advocating for our educators and students, ensuring that we all have the support needed to achieve success and thrive. Please join me in extending congratulations to the reelection of our dedicated officers, Angela Adzma, Unamar, and Bonnie Wakeman, who have been re-elected to their respective positions as HEA Vice President, HEA Secretary, and HEA Treasurer. Their continued service and commitment to our union's mission are invaluable as we navigate the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead for our association. On behalf of the entire HEA community, we want to take a moment to express our heartfelt appreciation to our classified staff for your invaluable contributions and support. Every day, you embody commitment, resilience, and professionalism, ensuring that our buildings run smoothly and our students are supported. As proclaimed earlier this evening, March is Women's History Month. As we celebrate this month, it is essential to recognize the strides made by women, particularly through their unions, in achieving better pay, enhanced protections against discrimination and harassment, and increased freedom from debt. However, our journey towards gender equality is far from over. As Randy Weingarten, President of the American Federation of Teachers stated, "Together, we must do our part to preserve our democracy and help our nation live up to the beautiful poetry of our Constitution." When we say "we the people," we mean "all the people." This quote underscores the importance of collective action in addressing the systemic barriers that continue to hinder women's equality and justice. Let us carry forward this spirit of solidarity and commitment as we strive for a future where every individual, regardless of their gender, is truly empowered and valued in society. HEA and HSD bargaining teams have met four times for contract bargaining agreement negotiations. We appreciate the ability to work full days to address this work and we're excited that we've tentatively agreed on four articles. HEA is optimistic regarding our proposed language to include equity supports for our BIPOC and LGBTQ2SIa+ members. HEA is pleased to have the opportunity to participate as thought partners with the recent calendar adoption process. We value the school board's responsiveness to the community input and our human resource partners' willingness to explore a new process for soliciting input from our association leaders. This inclusive decision-making process sets a commendable model for other districts, ensuring our members have a voice in discussions that directly impacts them. It was exciting to see more licensed staff attend this month's superintendent listening session at Quality Ridge Elementary. Topics that were discussed include support staff shortage primarily for sped, safety training for support staff and substitutes, the need for alternative education setting for our middle school students, workload relief for counselors, disruptive learning and sustainability, evaluation process and support, and understanding school funding. Since the listening session, educators have reached out to me inquiring about the next listening session and wondering if it will ever be held virtually. There were also recommendations to encourage more participation that we'd love to share before the next listening session opportunity. You've heard me express many times that our working conditions are students' learning conditions. Speaking on behalf of our members, I have lifted concerns of disruptive behavior numerous times. Recently, this has escalated to a new level. Our members have brought forward situations that directly impact their safety. Tonight, it is crucial that you understand that we've been handling a rising number of back-to-back situations involving students with threatening behaviors towards our educators. We expect you to approach this matter with seriousness it deserves. We rely on your commitment to partnering with our association to identify and implement solutions that prioritize safety in our schools. HEA leaders and members are working to ensure that they know who is on their building site safety teams and reports are being accurately recorded and submitted. We are also reviewing where to locate our school discipline plan and referrals. And lastly, we are ensuring our members know when and how to access and file an incident report. HEA members will be attending the Oregon Educati- or the Oregon Education Association Political Action Committee Convention in March. We're excited to meet and interview candidates who can directly affect the support needed to improve our education funding and enhance education-related legislation. Lastly, it has been great to see all the support our seniors get from our educators in lieu of letters of recommendation for scholarship applications, acknowledgement for participation in various sports such as senior nights, and all the upcoming competitions and test preparation. HEA members have been there for you since kindergarten, and we want to encourage all of you to keep up the hard work and finish strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Board and Superintendent time. We will start with our students. You guys decide who wants to go first?
Um, I have really nothing to add for tonight, but I do appreciate all the updates we got from the work session and down to here. I feel very informed, so thank you.
Yep.
Uh, I really appreciate the uh, API recognition and all, just like the POC recognition we're getting, uh, especially during this school year, because I've never seen this much. And I'm really proud of like the district we've become. Um, my, I also hear a lot of words, my mom saying we are like the best district out there, uh, especially because we give voices to students, uh, hence why we're sitting right here. Um, I think one other thing I have to add in is, is that Encore, I mean, which is like um, the sixteen best singers in our school, we are going to state to try and qualify in four days. So I'm a little bit nervous. So my head's kind of in the clouds right now, but praying for you guys is wishing us luck and qualifying, but um, I like to maintain humility. Thank you.
Well, best of luck for sure. Travis?
I'd like to build on what Hadley said a little bit too and give um, some shout-outs to our Equity Access and Engagement Team um, for some of the events that have happened over the last month, I think since we met last, um, including our uh, Community Inclusion Forum, uh, bringing together families of students who are experiencing disabilities with Rick Robinson on the topic of self-regulation and some brain research. Also, our celebration of Lunar New Year, um, facilitating a very diverse group um, in celebrating the Lunar New Year. And last week, Black History uh, event at South Meadows, which was just really moving to see how much community came out and uh, the singing and the dancing and the slideshows that were shown in celebration of Black History was really powerful and brought to us in collaboration with staff in our Black Village Family Advisory Committee. Um, we've started academic conferences, which is a chance for me and um, our executive directors, um, assistant superintendents to sit with our principals in feeder groups. So imagine the elementary, middle, and high school principals of a single feeder meeting for a half a day to review school improvement, um, targets and data as they align to our strategic plan. And it's an incredible mid-year reflection on the work that's going on in aligning our systems to achieve our goals for our strategic plan, including details about how much kids are learning to read and showing off to their teachers and principals and parents uh, right now in the school year. I don't know if you've ever been in a middle or in, in an elementary school at the time of year where the light bulb goes on. Um, but that's happening in our schools and our data is very promising in terms of meeting our strategic planning goals. Uh, to that end, also in the last uh, board update, I included a mid-year goal reflection um, for myself. For you, um, there's no action required, but I've been proud of uh, some of what we've been able to achieve in the last eight months. So I hope you have a chance to review that. And then we'll talk about uh, superintendent evaluation later in the year. Um, I wanted to thank everybody involved in bargaining on the classified and licensed bargaining teams or uh, labor partners and our staff. That's a lot of work to prepare for those meetings and those are long meetings. Thank you, everybody. Um, the Hillsborough Schools Foundation hosted their gala on Saturday, which was super well-attended. And I just found out you're gonna hear it here first out of the press, that they raised over $200,000 and it's more than they've ever raised at the gala before. So thank you to everybody who was involved in that event. Um, and thank you to HSF for your ongoing support of our schools. They've been there every step of the way with our career pathways, work in HSD, and the celebration itself was um, just stunning to see uh, the work that HSF has been able to support us with in the last decades. Um, that is all from me. Thank you for a good meeting tonight.
Thank you. Uh, board time. We'll start with Erica.
Um, I just wanted to say, especially today after the- Um, I just wanted to say, especially today after the presentations, this is my seventh year, I think now on the board. Um, and one of the longest board members now since we have new people. I am just so in awe and impressed about like where we are, friends, friends from where we were and like just this journey that we've been in. I'm so proud and appreciative of having been part of this journey. Um, and just like, I'm really was just having all the feels with Fran's presentation and thinking about, you know, back when I decided to run and I was like, all these things that I wanted. And I'm like, it's, it's happening, it's happening. And, and it's just a reminder of like, change takes time. And, um, it also takes time to build trust and keep that trust and maintain positive relationships. And I feel like our district does such a good job of, um, being intentional about our relationships with our unions, with our community, with our parents, our students. Um, and it's something that I'm just, we are constantly working. We don't always get it right, but we're constantly working to improve that. And I'm really proud of all of our administration and our community. Um, because it also happens, change happens at the speed of trust. So if they don't trust us, then we can't, you know, do our, our work and um, the bond was also just a great tool for us to exercise that trust muscle and, um, see that everything that we asked for, we, uh, we did and we accomplished. So I just want you all to feel so proud of that. And also just a lot of gratitude for where we are now and, um, where we started and knowing that we still have a lot of things that we want to do and want to accomplish. Um, but as a board, you know, being a good team and collaborating and working together, I'm really appreciative also of just the board dynamic that we have. As you see today, we don't always agree on everything, but we are always very cordial and respectful. And I'm so thankful that we're in this kind of environment in our board. Just a lot of gratitude to me.
Monique, anything to add tonight?
Yep, a, a few things. Uh, first, I'd like to thank all the members of the staff. I know there were a lot of emails again from me flying out of a variety of topics. So I appreciate your responsiveness and helpfulness in addressing some of those concerns. Um, I had the opportunity to participate in Engineers Week, um, last week. And the students, they had some intel members there and, uh, students were given a bag with four or five pieces of really thin wood, some duct tape, a wooden spool, a Dixie cup and a ping pong ball. And their challenge, they were tasked with designing a way to launch it into the air. And I found it very interesting, their creativeness and their designs. It was like no two designs were alike. And it was really neat that, um, it was also very interesting that they worked through the challenges they had in some of their designs. It didn't work the first round, um, that they worked on it again. I also had the opportunity to participate in interviewing, um, some students for jobs and roles at BizTown. We talked a little bit about that um, upstairs in the work session. Um, and BizTown is, um, a mock-up which gives students an opportunity to to fill, uh, roles that you will find in the community. So that was very interesting. They were super excited just for the interview and they were super sharp students. So that, that was a lot of fun as well. Um, lastly, I would, I would like to ask the board to consider, um, revisiting a policy, um, policy GDC that deals with personnel and, and, um, some definitions, um, that I feel like we can do some improvement upon that policy and the way that we put things in our board packet. Maybe the verbiage in our packet could change a little bit, um, improve so that we have, uh, greater transparency and clearer clarity, um, in that. So I would, I would ask, um, Chair Watson that we could do that. That's all that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Travis and Rose, that seemed like a thing we can manage soon. Okay. Look for that in an upcoming work session. Nancy, anything to add tonight?
Um, to our two board members, sing on to the Hillsborough Foundation fundraiser on Thank God For You. Um, that amount is just phenomenal. And i- in my head, when I think of all the school districts that I've personally attended in my career, how many of them would have been ten times better if they had a foundation like that to help them? That is just, it's, you, it's unique. It's incredible and we ought to be very thankful.
Patrick, anything to add tonight?
A few things. First of all, uh, I very much enjoyed last week reading to the kindergarten and first grade class at the Hillsborough Online Academy. I got to read one of my favorite books, uh, when I was growing up by Morikai Grisham. And I encourage everyone, haven't had a chance to yet, to consider reading to the online academy class. They'd love to have you and it's, uh, it's, it's, it was interesting insight. I hadn't sat in on the online academy at the elementary level. It's, it's interesting to see how, how they, we have wonderful teachers in this district who manage that interesting online environment with little children very well and get them engaged and ready to learn. And so it was, it was really neat. Also, uh, there's some question according to the Oregon School Boards Association of whether, um, the summer learning funds and HB forty-eight-two will move forward. And those have been so helpful in past years on, yes, to, to, uh, come out of the pandemic and address some of the needs in the community with summer learning. And so they've invited, uh, members, including us, uh, and members of the public to our, who want to see that funding get passed in this legislative session so we can have summer learning, uh, to, uh, write to, uh, relevant legislators. So, uh, I encourage everyone to take a look at that if you have time and something that's near to your heart. Um, and finally, I'd say, uh, congratulations to our classified union on their membership increases. That's great to hear. Members feel like you're representing their interests well. And, uh, to our licensed union, I was concerned to hear about the a continued behavioral dysregulation that's affecting staff. And so I trust our district leaders will prioritize, um, finding out more about how they can take steps to create that. I hope you'll come back to the board and share whether those steps have been effective. So we know whether we need to provide more support to staff somehow. So thank you to everyone and good things happening in our district.
Anything to add tonight?
I just wanted to say thank you for all of your work. You're both unions for all of your work that you've been doing. It's not easy and I just wanted to very appreciative of all of your work. So thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, yes, had an opportunity to, uh, attend the HSF auction, which was amazing. And it was so great to see so many members of staff and people from in our schools there. Um, just a fantastic night. Uh, got an opportunity to attend the Black History Month celebration at South Meadows Middle School. And that was just amazing. And Dr. Williams just, yeah, just amazing experience. So, uh, great opportunity there. Um, I appreciate our licensed staff having me as part of the bargaining team. I'm learning, like Erica said, we've been here seven years and I, uh, in the spirit of continuous improvement, I'm still learning a bunch by sitting on that committee. So I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Uh, looking ahead, we only have one meeting in the month of March because of spring break. So, um, the next time we get together will be a work session, regular session combination for the whole month. Uh, looking past that to the first one in April, which would be a uh, work session, um, I will be in Indiana, hopefully just witnessing a totality of a solar eclipse, um, from my sister's backyard for three minutes and forty seconds, as long as the weather participates. Um, so I've already, uh, put a heads up for by Chair Pantoja to maybe run that meeting in case I'm virtual or who knows. Maybe I'll be in Chicago by then. Maybe by Tuesday I might be in Chicago. Um, I'll be here to help plan it or whatever, but I think I'm, uh, asking about, uh, that to go and take the lead in that meeting if she can. Um, so look for that. Uh, and yeah, great meeting, everybody. Thank you for doing all the work. We are adjourned.